Recording in progress.
I will call the February 6, 2024, a meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. It's great to see everybody. We've got a busy agenda this evening. Let's get right into...
Excuse Tran.
Oh, yes. We need to excuse Councilmember Tran, who's out of state and on vacation. So Councilmember Tran is excused. All right, now moving on to Mayor's emerging issues and report. Bill has done yet another great PowerPoint presentation. Let's get right into it. Next Thursday, February 15th, yes, the day after Valentine's Day, we have my State of This, our State of the City address at the Performing Arts and Events Center. The theme is Welcome Home, and we've got a great presentation for you. Hope you can make it. And doors open at 5:30, and then we'll get started right around 6:00. And it's a great, it's free to the public, and it's a great opportunity to talk about the accomplishments of the past year and the vision moving forward. And so that, I hope you can make it. For folks that cannot make it, it will be recorded and put on local TV and also on our YouTube and YouTube station. Okay, we had the City Council annual retreat. I know the City Council President and the council members will be talking about this and there. And so not to steal their thunder, but I thought we had a very productive conversation about issues. There's the picture right there. We were at the Dumas Bay Center for pretty much all day. It's really one of the best retreats we've ever had, talking about our strategic vision moving forward. And I want to thank the staff for giving up their Saturday and the council members, and it was a good discussion had by everybody. Also, I wanted to report back in regard to the next item. I was actually in the, I was at the 92nd Winter Meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, DC. That's me in the White House right there, just right there in the main hallway. It was a tremendous opportunity. I met, there were 250 mayors there from across the country. When the Vice President came for the luncheon, as you can see her picture middle right, I was actually sitting next to the mayor of Seattle, former fellow Husky Bruce Harrell. We were sitting there, and we had the, on the last full day that we were there, we got to see the President in the East Room deliver remarks to our group. And I have to tell you, this was really unprecedented for any kind of conference I've been at. Not only did we hear from the President of the United States, the Vice President, you see there, Tony Blinken, who's obviously very busy on the world stage, took time to meet with us, as did Miguel Cardenas, the U.S. Secretary of Education, and Jennifer Granholm, who just had a birthday last week. She, a former governor of Michigan, is the Energy Secretary. She addressed us. And United States Senator Chris Murphy from Connecticut had, as well as, I think, the U.S. Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg, and quite a number of other, we had at least half the cabinet come talk to the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And there were cities there from large and small, from, you know, different pockets of the country and main centers. And it was really one of the best conferences I've been to. The picture's on the far right, just to let you know. I had one hour and 15-minute window, in which I actually had a window where I could get away, and that meant in the snow, and it wasn't uphill both ways, but it was in the snow, and I put on my running sneakers, and it was coming down sideways, but I only had one sweatsuit, and I got down to the Lincoln Monument and got to see Washington, DC blinking in snow. So it was really one of the, one of the most amazing conferences I've been to. And like I said, met mayors from around the country, talking about the issues, whether it's crime or drugs, homelessness, you know, urban growth, housing. It was really some, a great opportunity to discuss the issues that all cities face. So I thank you very much, everybody, for... And then we're going to be going to the National League of Cities in a month, and I believe the entire council, but Councilmember Dovie, are you not able to go now?
I am not able to attend.
I think we had seven, but we'll have the rest of the council. We're going to be going. The National League of Cities is more council, but it also has mayors as well from around the country. And when we went last year, and I know that Councilmember Honda has gone, as well as others have gone previously, last year we had a great delegation with our council president and Councilmember Asefa Dawson, and I think actually, actually Councilmember Dovie and Councilmember Walsh were there as well. And that is a massive convening of city council members and elected officials and mayors from around the country, every pocket of the country. And that'll be happening in March. And again, I think it's a great opportunity to hear different issues going on. Okay, we, as you see here, we had a little bit of history. The main picture in the middle there is the celebration in downtown Seattle of the opening, the first-ever opening of a consulate general's office in Seattle with, with the country of India. And it was the anniversary, the 75th anniversary of India Republic Day on January 26th. That was a great opportunity to also celebrate the opening of the consulate office in Seattle, which covers six states. But it's headquartered in Seattle, but they're also going to be having offices in Bellevue as well. And as you can see, there are mayors from entire, the entire region. On the far right picture, Nancy Backus, from Mayor of Auburn, and Dana Ralph on the left there, to me, Mayor of Kent, and our new consulate general in my office. He swung by personally to make sure that he knew I was invited, and he went to a number of different cities on that day. So Mr. Gupta is working hard on behalf of his nation and making sure that they really have a presence here, and that was a packed ballroom in downtown Seattle on that Friday. Let's see here. It was interesting. While we may be the oldest constitutional democracy in the world, India is by far the largest. I think they've got over a billion people. So he made that point several times, which is kind of fun. All right, we had the Federway Health Through Housing meeting, and we had representatives of the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. Ironically, actually, two weeks before, the week before that, I had actually been at the Conference, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where I met the national president of the Urban League. Here, the president of the, of the local chapter in Seattle, which has been around since the 1930s convened, and they're going to be overseeing the Health Through Housing location. The council president was able to be in the meeting with me along with key staff members, and we're going to be, they're going to be giving a briefing before the council. I encourage them, we, the council president asked some great questions while we were in there, and we're going to be, and we're encouraging them to be prepared to answer these questions when they come give a briefing with us. Council President?
Oh, we just talked about the extended stay and some of the concerns that you all have about how it's going to be run, and the fact that they are going to be having the ability to use drugs within the facility as well as outside the facility, and so, and the concerns that we have for the neighborhood. And so when they come to speak to us at the podium, which they will, it'll be a great time for all of you to ask your questions of them at that time.
Well, and I think I would, I don't think it's condoned. I think they've got certain, under our standards, they've got clear prohibition against using those, but these are going, this is going to be their individual apartment. And this is really about getting people, obviously, on a path toward self-sufficiency and resilience and treatment. So you'll hear more about that. Excuse me, let's see here. Boy, I definitely need my glasses.
Have they gotten their building permit yet?
Brian, do you know, or actually Keith, do you know if they've gotten their building permit? I think they just, oh, they just actually put it in, their building permit. The Councilmember Honda asked if they had received their, gotten their building permit, but they had just put it in, and actually, last week, or the week, that was last week, that meeting, I think the day before, I'd received a personal phone call from the Executive's Chief of Staff, Shannon, who wanted to make sure that we had our eye on that. And then, Keith, you're watching that building permit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Welcome home.
Thank you.
I do have a question about that, though.
Sure.
A few of us went through that, the facility, I think in December, when we walked through. And the facility was okay to put the folks that came over from Afghanistan, thank you, but not okay to put our folks that need shelter now. And they couldn't, King County couldn't really explain that to us as to why, but I know that the Auburn Hotel just recently opened. They had their ribbon cutting, but they've been housing people in that hotel for over a year, even though they've just finished the renovations. So why can't we do the same thing here? Because the renovations that they were talking about were adding, or taking some of the rooms on each floor to make a common area, and then the rest of the rooms had furniture, they had everything they needed. So why can't we put people in now?
Well, it's not about we putting people in.
Well, King County.
Right, exactly. Because I think it is really important, and it's important to understand, this is a King County program, a King County, you know, I think they really went silent on this project for a while, went dormant, I would say. And so it was great to hear from the Urban League, who's managing the Health Through Housing at this location. I could tell you that with regard to the emergency shelter, we were very fortunate to have Fusion help us out with their location, and they housed dozens of individuals. So to answer that, I just think that, I, you know, I think clearly they had bought, just as a matter of review, for emergency shelter, you know, obviously shelter is a continuum. And you've got emergency shelter on one end, and then that goes into more transitional housing, and it's on a spectrum, it's on a graduated. What's happening at, on PACT Highway, at the location where we've been housing for emergency shelter with the help of Fusion, that is, that's transitional housing and with families and that kind of thing, and they've been able to open that for emergency shelter. The emergency shelter, I think you're contemplating and discussing, is really what the Red Lion was supposed to be for.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is Auburn just cut the ribbon on Dawn's Place, which is their permanent housing.
Supportive, right.
Supportive housing.
Yeah.
But they've had people living in there for well over a year. So, and they just got done with the renovations and cut the ribbon. So why can't we do the same thing when the rooms looked like they were in very good condition? They have all the furniture. Why can't we do the same thing?
Well, it's not we, it's King County.
Well, King County, excuse me, I know.
So I don't know. It's King County, yes.
What I was gathering was that King County is owning it, but the people running it are the Urban League.
Correct.
And it may have been the contract between the Urban League and the King County. The Urban League is quite anxious to get started, but I think there was some discussion about how that was going to work.
Well, it's just, it's just a concern, keeping people out in the cold when we have perfectly great place to put them. So...
Well, again, it's King County, and so, yeah. So we were very fortunate that Fusion stepped up for emergency cold weather shelter, and we did get people out when it got unduly cold. Okay, so, but thank you for the question. We then met with the newly appointed Federway Korean American Association President, Heng Kim. She was, she's right there, I took a picture with her in my office, and also the group, former mayor Michael Park was there, members of the Korean American Association. And Ms. Kim was with us, with our sister-city trip last year in Korea and Japan. And then, let's see here, we took a tour of the remodeled spaces at the Commons. This is at the Commons over there on the side where Dick's is, on the Amazon side. General Service, the Federal General Services Administration, GSA, is, this is on that side, sort of between the pet store and where Amazon is, where, essentially where the brake, the old Sears brake shop used to be. If you haven't seen it yet, actually I was walking on the outside of the mall, trying to get some exercise over the weekend, and it does look beautiful from the outside as well. So feel free to go over there, take a look at it. They've got the GSA that's bringing in 300 employees.
SSA.
SSA, Social Security, right, okay. GSA facilitates SSA, all right, thank you. So the Social Security Administration is bringing in 300 people there, and they're going to be on the upstairs area, but they're also leasing out other areas. And so this trip was with, where we went over there, had about 40 commercial brokers and realtors to rent out, I think it was about 22,000 square feet. This is on the second floor of what was the former Sears location, and they have done a phenomenal job of remodeling that. So it's great to see that. So while you're getting your pet supplies at the new pet store or at Amazon, I'm over there all the time trying to keep our 16-year-old fed. It's a good place to go take a look at. Okay, we had the ribbon cutting events last week with the Chamber at the St. Edward Suites and Holiday Inn Express. That is the top picture there. That's the former, the original location of the La Quinta, right by the freeway, and a great crowd there. It was great to see everybody. And then the very next day, we were at Global Credit Union at the, right there at the Commons Parking Lot on 320th, and they have essentially relocated. They were in where the Safeway is on 320th, but now they've got this standalone location at that place. So those grand openings were last week. We've got upcoming events in the community. We've got the March of Diapers Drive on Saturday, March 23, at Twin Lakes Federal Fred Meyer, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And with us, we have Cheryl Hurst. Cheryl, will you tell us a little bit about what's going on this year with the March of Diapers?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and community members. There's just so much to tell you. We have the opening of the March Diapers Babies in Beyond Diaper Bank, and people are like, why is it called Babies in Beyond? Because not every babe, every person that used incontinence product, aka diaper, is a baby. We've got plenty of elderly people out there, Depends, Tana, you name them. And so we have actually expanded beyond just baby diapers and wipes. We also take adult incontinence products, so hence why it's called Babies Beyond Diaper Bank. People are like, what exactly is a diaper bank? Oh, can you come withdraw stuff? It's not exactly that way. What happens is the diaper bank works with specific nonprofits, and what happens is they can bulk drop ship diapers instead of like, well, we go to, you know, multiple places around all these different cities, whether it's Target, Safeway, Amazon, and order all those different things, where, when you're a diaper bank, you can actually buy them in a bulk manner, drop ship them to different things. You also would have some on hand, and then there would be different events a couple of times a year where people that are in need can sign up. But specifically, right now, we are going to be working with a couple of the nonprofits between Federway and Kent and Auburn. But for this year, which I'll get further down, it's also very confusing. So yes, we have a diaper bank. We moved in and fluffed the place all up, and it is actually going to have an open house on Saturday. Hopefully, not too many people, but an open house, so we can explain about the diaper bank, what we plan to do, how we're going to do it. We are, we were going to be putting in an IRG property, and then we switched over, and we were kindly given a fantastic space to rent from DBM Contractors, which has been a business, oh, probably 30 or 40 years in Federway. So we're really proud to be one other tenants. The Starry Starry Night Gala benefiting the diaper bank. Well, when you get a diaper bank, then it's like you say, okay, well, how are they going to afford these diapers? How are they going to be able to work with that? It's, we go by donations on that. We'll be getting grants and things like that, but grants don't usually cover a diaper bank director. And so this will be our 10th year of doing the March of Diapers. Well, that's been done for free for 10 years. And once you have a diaper bank, you have to actually, like, pay a director, which also helps with getting grants from cities and other organizations, because you actually have an employee and you have, like, a real place. We've been extremely fortunate throughout the years that, and I can say, you know, Federway has opened their arms, including the property managers, Snitzer Properties, many, many years has given us free places to put our diapers. Well, now having a real diaper bank, we become a real business, which, yeah, guess what, Jim? I'll get a business license here, too, as soon as I get everything else done. Got to make sure we get that in there. And then the diaper drive itself is actually March 1st to the 31st. It's called the March of Diapers. We collect diapers and wipes. We have, we're still having businesses signing up, but typically we have 80 businesses in 15 different cities that collect. And with that, it's just, oh, gosh, they probably do pretty good. Well, we did pretty good. In one month last year, we did 412,019 diapers, and that's 412,000. That's a lot of boxes. And we also had a little over 137,000 wipes. We were able to gift to 20 nonprofits from Tacoma to Everett, five of those serving directly here in Federway. If you worked in any way at the March of Diapers in the last couple of years, raise your hand here. I can tell you, at least half of the people in here have worked on it or donated to it. So we totally appreciate that. The diaper drive, Saturday, the 23rd. That is Federway, the city of Federway. This is the time to shine, because the Fred Meyer has been phenomenal. What they're doing is they're going to order in a massive amount of diapers. They're going to be trying to get the best sales that they can get on them. We will be having two to three people at each door from 10:00 to 2:00 on March 23. And what that will do is, number one, help us to be able to enlarge our numbers. But what we also will do is, once we get over, like, 400,000 diapers, we'll be keeping some of those diapers for the diaper bank, rather than giving each nonprofit, you know, more than what they can hold at their, at their place. If you want to be involved in any way, shape, or form, the easy way to go is just look up March of Diapers on Facebook and shoot us a thing. Plenty of people, Bill Vedino knows how to get ahold of me, Jim knows how to get ahold of me, and we, if there's anything that you're interested in being, that's March 9. And other than that, honestly, like I would say, Federway embraced this nine years ago, and really never would have expected it to get this big, and never would have expected to find a home for, for the March diapers. So I appreciate the community, I appreciate the support you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Council President?
Can you give us, Cheryl, can you give us the address for the diaper bank for those who want to go to the open house, and then explain what the gala is and how they can sign up?
Okay, so let me kind of explain about the open house. It won't be, I'm trying to explain to people that it's not going to be a place where people are going to come. So I actually want them, you know, it's actually out on Facebook to where it is, but it's not like a place, I don't want people to start knocking on the door and saying, hey, can we get diapers here? That's not the way it's going to work. But the open house, you can look under March of Diapers, it tells about that. And then as for the gala, they can go on, they can go on pretty much the March of Diapers, and it says, the gala, it's called Starry Starry Night, or they can send a message. And then there's a link, which our web person is working on the stuff. Anyways, and so, yeah, that's, that's how it is. It's $75 a person, choices, prime rib or salmon, we're no chicken, you guys, prime rib or salmon, and we appreciate your support.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Bill, let's go back a couple, let's finish this up real quick. Go back to the Westridge, right there. So on Saturday, excuse me, on January 22nd, the Westridge Homeowners' Association meeting, the chief, several officers and myself, went to Silver Lake Elementary and met with neighbors in the Westridge community, talk about crime and things that are going on in their community, had a great conversation. That's the picture on the left. The picture on the right is in Betty Taylor's residence at Traditions across the street from Town Square Park. That was on January 24. And that was a great opportunity, again, to talk about public safety and the issues, especially in the downtown area. And to go forward a couple, let's go forward a couple, Bill, to talk about the town hall meeting that we're having. We are going to be having a Neighborhood Connection Town Hall meeting on Thursday, March 7, at 6:00 PM. Obviously, the first and foremost topic of that, just like at the community meetings before, the council will be there, the management team meeting will be there, public safety. The chief is going to give a presentation. We'll have officers there. The great thing about those community meetings we had as well is we had our new community safety person, is it Tiffany?
Yes, Community Engagement Coordinator Tiffany Clemmings.
That's right. Tiffany did a great job, and we're engaging with the community. So the town hall meetings will begin again, Olympic View Elementary School, 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 7. Okay, let's go back a couple, Bill. We were just actually at the, right there. We were last Friday. It's official. Dave Van Valkenburg is actually the chief. Yeah, he's great. He's a firefighter's firefighter. He's got over 30 years of experience. We're so fortunate to have Chief Dave. And we also had the first-ever female deputy chief, and we had some other promotions. It was great. And so it was, it was really proud of our firefighter colleagues and partners, and they're just doing phenomenal work there. Lane Winter was made field chief. I've known Lane for years and years, a couple of decades, and great to see his promotion to field chief. So, which is kind of a new position in the fire service, and Lane, again, is a firefighter. We've just got a great fire department. We're so fortunate for him. Okay, and then let's go forward from there. Went to, to do the favorite thing I did today is mayor, at St. Vincent's DePaul, the, there were, the first picture in the upper hand, on the left side, reading to pre-kindergarten or kindergarteners or pre-K four-year-olds, really cute. And then the second class asked much more challenging questions, and they were a second-grade group that came with some good questions today. So it was fun. And that's again over at St. Vincent's DePaul, and so that's probably one of the, one of the great things I get to do as mayor. We've got the Business Safety Summit, again, talking about our emphasis on making sure that we're doing everything to combat crime in our community. Also, at the retreat, I wanted everybody to let you know, we're going to be working on the budget this year, and we're going to be talking about priorities. One of those is an assessment of how many new additional officers from the 150 budget that we have, and that we're going to be doing that. This is really geared, the Business Safety Summit will be on, I need my glasses, February 21, 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM via Zoom, small and large retail businesses, corporate retail partners and loss prevention personnel, to talk about real-time strategies to be able to stop what's occurring, and doing everything we can to partner with our business community to prevent and address crime in our community. Okay, that is my, that is my report. And we had an extra week in there, so it seemed that we got a lot going on. Now, the most important part of the meeting is to hear from you, the people we work for, and public comment. Everybody knows the rules. Please tell us the community you live in. We don't need your address. Green means go. Yellow means you've got about 30 seconds. Red means please stop. I hate interrupting people. Okay, so with that said, I'll call the first few names out. Please queue up. We've got Craig Patrick, Ken Blevins, Melissa Hamilton, Zachary Orr, and then Anna Patrick, and then that's it for now. Craig?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, community. I'm going to attempt to tie in everything you spoke of into what, I'm going to try to tie everything into what I'm going to speak of, okay? So I'm going to start with my first thing, the State of the City address, right?
Yeah.
So I'm happy to announce that our group, Stand Up Community, is going to have a booth at the State of the City address. So we're excited about that, and we hope that the community members can come by, and the council members can come by and check out the Stand Up Federway Community Group at the State of the City address. The second thing is fish fries. St. Vincent's DePaul is going to be having their fish fries from February 16th to March 22nd, and we'll have a bin that you can bring your diapers to. So if you want to bring your diapers somewhere, you're not really sure where to bring them to, come to one of our fish fries at St. Vincent's. They're every Friday between February 16th and March 22nd. So we're going to try to help Cheryl with her diapers, collect them up at St. Vincent's. Ted Colby works with that program to a certain extent, so we're happy to help Cheryl with that. Number three, St. Patrick's Day. So, we're going to, we're... St. Vincent's DePaul is going to be having their fish fries from February 16th to March 22nd, and we'll have a bin that you can bring your diapers to. So if you want to bring your diapers somewhere, you're not really sure where to bring them to, come to one of our fish fries at St. Vincent's. They're every Friday between February 16th and March 22nd. So we're going to try to help Cheryl with her diapers, collect them up at St. Vincent's. Ted Colby works with that program to a certain extent. So we're happy to help Cheryl with that. Number three, St. Patrick's Day. So we're going to, we're, I know you're excited. So we got, we got, we got players for St. Patrick's Day. I talked to Neil Hubbard. We secured Neil. We talked to AJ.
Tell us who Neil is.
Neil Hubbard's a bagpipe player from the east side, and he's been coming here for about five years now. So we work with Neil and the community and have Neil perform for us. We're going to have face painters there, a face painter there this year, you know, balloons, beads and gold coins. What else? Oh, yeah, AJ, Salton County Fire, great organization. AJ, I reached out to AJ about performing with the drums and the bagpipes, but I have yet to hear back from him. So I don't know if maybe you want to take, maybe talk to some of your friends.
Could be me and you, but we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see, we'll see. I'm going to, I'll work on AJ. I'll see what he can do. Finally, we have a cleanup. So St. Patrick's Day is on a Friday, right? It's the 15th, right? Which is really, it's, let me back up to State of the City Address, right? So it's the day after St. Patrick, or day after Valentine's Day, which is also Ash Wednesday. So it's very conflicting for us Catholics. So we're going to do the State of the City on the 15th, and then, you know, we're going to do a cleanup in March. Our first cleanup for Stand Up Community is going to be March 16th, the day after the celebration. So we, the area we're looking at is Twin Lakes area up on 21st. We're going to do a litter pick. So we're going to try to make it kind of festive, maybe wear green. And then the cleanup is going to be on the 16th Saturday. Other than that, that's about all I have. I'm going to meet with the Diversity Commission on the 8th, see what kind of support we can, the Irish community can get from the Diversity Commission on that. And so I look forward to working with Ron Walker and his wife and see if I can have them participate in it as well. Thank you very much.
Oh, and for the, did you talk about the event that we'll have, you know, the raising of the flag, the Irish flag?
Yeah, that's going to be on the 15th at 9:00 AM.
Okay, right outside here?
Yeah, right outside City Hall.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Ken Blevins.
He's bribing me.
I just had to drop a package. You can do that in Federway and they won't even notice. I'm Ken Blevins. I live in Federway. I've lived here my entire life. So still a community member. My mom still lives here. Just had her 80th birthday not too long ago at Port of Ayarda. It was pretty awesome. But what I wanted to talk about today is, it's hard to follow this guy because he's so positive. He's, I went by the Day Center and it's not so positive over there. I've also noticed quite a bit of people out there with big, huge bunch of stuff and carts moving them around and just, it's a never-ending destination, Federway, of just the homeless drug addicts. Such a great thing for our city. And it's actually a really sad thing because we have a great city. We have great people here. It's just so, it's so awesome. We have so much potential and we've had such a great city for a long time. And to see these people, there's like maybe 20 people over there just having a party. There's a RV you can go buy drugs at. There's a van over there. Looks like they're broken down, but they're not. But no one out there to help them out. But I don't know what that Day Center does. I'd love to see the city actually do some action on that. And if they continue with this, just kick them out. We don't need to be a destination. There's plenty of places we can, people come here for whatever reason, they come through here, we can help them to where they actually get help. You know, maybe we can sponsor a hotel instead of just putting somebody in there without background checks or that kind of thing. Maybe we can put them in there knowing that they're going to stay there and get help and come out, you know, have potential for their life. So there's just too much of this going on. We have these city cameras everywhere, these blue lights. I thought, man, Kmart's coming back. So cool. Ah, negative again. So it's kind of, you know, their security is great. You know, that, you know, industry is going up. It's pretty awesome. It's not. You know, we keep on saying it's King County. King County, it's not our fault. It's not our thing. I would love for our leaders in the city at least to say, no, King County, we are not all for that. And in public, not just passing the buck to them, just be leaders and just say, hey, stop doing this, stop doing this, just to the top of your lungs until they possibly stop. So I don't know why this thing took them so long to get this thing done over here at Extended Stay. I've been waiting so long to see what a cool thing it's going to be. It's not going to be. So, but, but I wish the best for these people, but in the meantime, they're just suffering. And we're inviting more and more from out of the state because we have awesome programs just to house them. We keep on paying them. I just paid 620 some dollars for my tabs. I don't know what happened to that $30 tab thing. But I'm just happy that my money's going to something good. So anyways, thanks very much.
Thanks, Ken. And that wasn't, again, we need, we need to hear it. It's not all, it's not all rah rah. We need to, we need to hear your honest assessment. So thank you very much. And I want to let everybody know, this community and you would have been really proud of Council President Kochmar, we were there for, you know, a meeting, you know, not behind closed doors, but a meeting to talk about issues, and she asked some really tough questions. And it was great. And it was, I think everybody would have been proud of the Council President.
You need to understand that the Urban League is saying that their success rate, after they put them in these hotels and get them into their surround services, 5%, 5%. Ask that question when they're here.
Yeah, she asked some really great questions. And so we are going to be, I think with the one good piece of news, well, we've got some good news there, but that a much higher percentage of our residents are going to be in there. Did you remember what that percentage was?
I think it's, instead of being 15% from Federway, I think it was going to be more like 65% Federway. But I, don't quote me on that because that was going to be 15% Federway.
Right.
But now it's, sounds more like, yeah, was going to be outside Federway. And 15 was going to be Federway.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, whatever. It's more now. Yeah, thank you.
Lot more, all right, thank you. Melissa? Yeah, Melissa Hamilton.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, please.
Just with, with Ken addressing about the Day Center, a number of weeks ago, I mean, we did a great job of cleaning things up at the Day Center. And I thought that we had a commitment from them there that they would be self-policing. And they're not following, I was by there yesterday, and I can validate exactly what Ken said.
Okay.
They are slipping way back and they're not self-policing, and there needs to be action taken there.
Well, that's why we have these meetings. That's why it's important we hear this feedback. Keith, will you have your people go by there tomorrow?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll reach, I already reached out to Sarah to have a conversation, so we'll get, we'll figure something out.
Very good.
It is definitely unravelled.
I'll go over there tomorrow myself as well. Thank you very much. All right, Melissa, thank you for your patience.
You know, one of the things with the, which we've all pretty much agreed on is, we want them to get help. It's how to get the help. And so we need to keep talking to Urban League and King County about how to get these people the help that they need. Yeah.
Right. All right, Melissa, take three.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, City Council. My name is Melissa Hamilton. I emailed our council a couple of weeks ago about some legislation in Olympia that will greatly impact our city law department. House Bill 1994 will exclude the city prosecutor and eliminate prosecutor discretion from the criminal justice process in many of our misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor cases. These are the only crimes that cities have jurisdiction over. I have a lot of issues with this proposed legislation. The first being that our citizens who are victims of crime will not have a voice in the courtroom. The prosecutor represents the victim, the defense attorney represents the defendant, and the judge is supposed to be the neutral party. That's how that's worse, that's how this works constitutionally. My second concern is that by removing the prosecutor, our judge is now no longer a neutral party in the process. It will be the defense attorney and the judge making decisions, deciding the outcome of cases. My third concern is that compliance with conditions is not actually required for dismissal of cases. Legislation reads, if the defendant has substantially complied with the imposed terms and conditions, the court shall dismiss the charges. Substantially complied does not legally mean complied. So a condition might be that the defendant cannot commit any crimes for 30 days. And for 25 days, they do good, but for five days, they break into some vehicles. That's substantially complied. There is not a limit on how many times their cases can be dismissed, which will encourage recidivism. Our city-level resources to provide offender accountability and prosecute crime when deemed necessary will be taken away by design of the legislature if this passes. As a city, we need to consider how this is going to affect our residents who are experiencing crime, much like how we've had to consider how the pursuit laws and the Blake decision have affected our city. And please do not be unaware, this is a backdoor attempt to undo the Blake solution that was passed in 2023. If we don't want to lose our ability to leverage city-level resources to deal with misdemeanor crimes, we need to speak up. Also, because of the debate surrounding the constitutionality of this proposed law, does the doctrine of judicial review extend to state law? And can the city file a complaint for judicial review if this passes? Victims of crime in our city have a lot to lose. And you know, I'm really disturbed by what I'm hearing from our legislators. I am a survivor of childhood abuse. And I remember being asked by a family member at 12 years old while the trial was going on, why didn't you just ask him to stop? And so when I hear our legislators asking their constituents questions like, why didn't you do more to invest in prevention? What did you do to prevent yourself from becoming a victim? I'm reliving that trauma. Let's call that kind of questioning what it is. It's victim blaming, it's victim shaming, it's gaslighting, and people don't deserve to be victims because they didn't do enough to prevent it. We need to send a message to our lawmakers that we're not okay with laws that say criminals come first and victims come last. Because that is what is traumatizing our communities right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. I've been in contact with Melissa about this issue, and I've been communicating with the council. I have told our lobbyists, this is the number one legislative priority of our lobbyists to make sure that we do not allow this bill to pass. In my opinion, as a former prosecutor of 19 years, this is a direct threat about our ability to enforce the laws and to hold the founders accountable in our community. What I've, one of the things I want to let you know is, it did pass out of the committee. The deadline to come out of committee was last week. The deadline for it to come out of its chamber, out of the House chamber, there is no companion bill in the Senate, is the 13th. So I believe it's Tuesday, the 13th. That's the deadline in the House. It's in, the, the bill right now is in the Rules Committee. This is, again, HB 1994. I would encourage you to reach out to your, any, if you know any state legislators, if you know our state legislators, or if you don't, please look them up, contact them. I've been in contact with them. We want to stop HB 1994. It's in Rules right now, which is a precursor to, it means you're on deck essentially, to be brought before the full House. I have, with the assistance of our lobbyists, have contacted several members of the Rules Committee lobbying against it, as has our lobbying team. But we're, if it goes to the Senate, we will, we will definitely do everything we can to link up arms with not just our council, but the community to prevent what we believe is an unconstitutional abrogation. And the prosecutor just doesn't represent the victim. The prosecutor is the people's representative, and they seek to, in this bill, cut them out. I would encourage everybody to go to last Tuesday's Seattle Times editorial board op-ed about this issue that strongly opposed it. It came out on January 30th. And I emailed that to our lobbyists or to our legislators, and we're going to do everything we can. And if we have to, all of us need to get down there and stop this because this was literally bypass our city prosecutor on all crimes. Yeah, it's crazy. So anyway, that is something, thank you, Melissa, for your advocacy on that. And when we go down there, we'll see if you want to come down with us and testify on that bill. Okay, next, Zachary Orr. Is Zachary here? Zachary? Okay, I'll put that aside. When we get done, I'll ask if Zachary returned. Anna Patrick? And then Trinise Rogers?
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Thank you for that very moving testimony about the upcoming bill. Hopefully, we can put a stop to it. I'm here to bring up a couple of things. I went to the council retreat last weekend, and I just want to share my concern about some of the goals that we're looking at with investing in town hall downtown. I really liked the idea of considering adding on to the operation maintenance facility to buy some time. I really think it's dangerous, quite frankly, for us to consider moving a city hall to downtown. I don't understand why that's happening. It's a huge investment. And the concern is that we're going to be losing that, we're going to be using the TIP funding. And that's great that we have that opportunity, and I hope that that is still going to be an opportunity. But to consider losing that much tax revenue after, after that type of investment on a whole new city hall, losing that revenue for firefighters, I think that's going to have a devastating effect considering the drug epidemic that we have in our city. We need to be able to still be able to serve the people in our community, and it's, right now, it's, I can't even imagine what it's like. And so to think of, and we've already had that kind of thing happen with our police department with all of the LA light tech housing, you know, I think that it's, you know, unless we bring in some tax revenue through, you know, the spending, we're going to be hurting. So I think we really need to be careful with that. And then that's just my opinion. And then every time I hear about that, King County Health for Housing, I get so upset. What's the point of putting licensing together, saying that they can't do drugs if now we're just giving in? And we're going to be paying for it. This is outrageous. And I think we're being set up by having this brought to Federway for a variety of reasons. You've all got my email. You all know how I feel about this facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And I want to let you know that the study session about this issue, about the addition of the maintenance and operational facility, will be before the next city council meeting. So we're going to have a big, it was very clear that everybody on the council wanted to make sure that the public heard this discussion. And, and so there are no imminent plans. We're entering into a visioning process about what downtown looks like and if a city hall would be moved down there. But this presents an opportunity. So if we're going to put, add on an additional 10 million to that project, we need to know, we need to figure that out. So next meeting, two weeks from right now, on February 20th, we'll have a study session, probably starting early. Yeah, probably about 4:30. Where we're going to have a great presentation about the finances, the economics, and making sure, but we're going to get that message out wide and far. Because, Anna, what you're talking about is making sure that the community is involved in discussions like this, especially when we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. So thank you. All right, all right, Trinise Rogers?
Good evening. My name is Trinise Rogers. I'm a resident of Federway and also here on behalf of the Gotten Cooperative as a group of individuals, community members that addressed racism as a public crisis. And so after glancing over today's agenda, I realized there was nothing mentioned about Black History Month. So I would like to read the resolution to elevate Black History Month. All right, and it's kind of lengthy, and I hope that I was allotted five minutes because I'm speaking on behalf of the group.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And could you start that? We're going to do it, we're going to do the Black History Month next meeting, and it's on, it's on my Facebook page and on the city Facebook pages. So we're going to do that, and we'll have you here to read that. But would you give five minutes? And frankly, we'll set the timer, but take your time and go ahead.
I appreciate it. And so this is, again, this is a resolution declaring racism as a public crisis, whereas whereas racism has deep and harmful impacts that unfairly disadvantages Black Indigenous people of color, BIPOC, and unfairly advantages people who identify as white. And whereas racism harms every person in our society and is the root of the cause of poverty and economic inequity, and whereas injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, as King's County namesake, the Reverend Dr. Margaret King Jr. said. And whereas, whether intended or not, racism becomes ingrained in institutional policies and practices, creating a differential access to opportunities and resources and cause desperate outcomes in all aspects of life affecting health. And whereas, by maintaining the status quo in existing systems of power and privilege based on our county's... Our country's long history of our continued persistence of white supremacy, institutional practices and policies do not need to explicitly identify races in order to have racist impacts on residents. Whereas cultural costs institutions and systems is critical, and the legacy of racist policies and practices continues to exist even once the policies and practices have been changed. And whereas reversing the legacy of institutional races calls for an understanding of the intersectionality, nature of power and oppression that amplify adverse effects of people who experience more than one form of marginalization, such as race, gender, and a disability. And a commitment to anti-racist policies and practices. And whereas decades of data collection by public health, Seattle and King County have demonstrated how BIPOC communities are affected by both acute impacts, such as gun violence, chronic impacts, such as a higher rate of cardiovascular disease, diabetes, maternal and infant mortality, underweight babies, and shorter, less healthy lives overall. Whereas King County residents of color have deep wells of resilience and strength, and BIPOC communities are less likely to experience other health conditions, such as suicide, Alzheimer's disease, and drug and alcohol-related conditions than their white counterparts. And whereas, King County residents of color are more likely to experience inequities in education, access to jobs, earning power, adequate of safe housing, higher rates of policing, and involving in the criminal justice legal system, and overall quality of life. And whereas, this fortunate impact of COVID-19 on our BIPOC communities is a present-day demonstration of the systemic racism in institutions and systems that have not valued and supported human life equitably. And whereas, by recognizing... Whereas, we recognize that historically and currently, King County has been complicit in maintaining and perpetuating structural racism, and that, as an institution, the Board of Health must stand in support of dismantling oppressive systems grounded in white supremacy. Whereas, King County government and public health, Seattle and King County, have expressed a commitment to developing stronger and better resource partnerships with community organizations and leaders to disrupt and dismantle racism and protect the health and well-being of our BIPOC communities and residents. Using quantitative data, including data about racial inequities, along with voices and knowledge of community leaders and residents, to get to solutions that work and that are sustainable. And whereas, in 2008, the King County Executive joined the Public Health, Seattle and King County, launch the Equity and Social Justice Initiative. And later in 2010, the King County Council passed Equity and Social Justice Ordinance. And now, the current Equity and Social Justice Strategic Plan leads with racial justice. And whereas, across the country, local governments have taken action to declare racism as a public health crisis, including the cities of Boston, Cleveland, and Columbus, Ohio, Franklin County, Ohio, the Indianapolis City County Council in Indiana, and Tacoma Pierce County Board of Health. And whereas, the Board of Health is committed to addressing racial equity and health disparities in all forms and at all levels, which are the individuals, institutions, and systemic levels across the country. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Health, King County, the Board declares racism... A, the Board declares racism a public health crisis. B, the Board supports the King County and Public Health, Seattle and King immediately in the work to advance a public health approach in addressing institutional and systemic racism. C, the Board commits to assessing, revising, and writing and guiding documents and its policies with a racial justice and equity lens, including Board of Health Code and Annual Plan. And D, the Board members commit to ongoing work around the race inequities such as participating in racial equity training, engaging, and being responsive to communities and residents impacted by racism, especially Black Indigenous communities, as partners in identifying and implementing solutions, establishing and agreed upon understanding of racial equity principles to work towards anti-racist policies and practices, and to serve as ambassadors of racial equity work. This resolution was... It's a 2010, it was introduced and was passed as amended by the Board of Health in June 18, 2020, and it was signed by our Board of Health, King County, Washington, Joe McDermott, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Trinise. And our city clerk will be in touch with regard to next council meeting and the actual... The city's proclamation.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is Zachary Orr... Did Zachary Orr return? Zachary Orr? Okay, and we don't... No one signed up prior to the meeting? All right. All right, that concludes our public comment. Thank you very much for your comments. That's the... Once again, it's the most important part of the meeting. Item five, Council Committee and Regional Committee reports. The Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilmember Walsh.
Our next Parks Committee meeting will be a week from tonight, on February 13th, at 5:00. And also, coming up in April, just to want to be the first to announce, our annual Parks Appreciation Day. This year, it will be held at the Blueberry Farm Park and Sahali Park. And we would love to get a lot of community members out there. This is the 18th year that we've had it, and it's a great event for the community. It beautifies the parks, and more important, it brings people together and helps build civic pride. And we'll have things for every ability, whether it's sitting there with the sign-in table, or out shoveling and pruning, and all getting down and dirty. There will be something for everybody. And so, put that on your calendar, April 20th, from 9:00 to noon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We had our land use meeting last night. A couple of things of interest that maybe citizens will want to follow. We'll be seeing ordinances on motorhomes in commercial areas, parking, and we'll be discussing motorhomes being parked in neighborhoods. So those will be coming up over the next couple of months. And then, we had some requests for some zoning changes, one around the mall, and one for a daycare facility over by Federway High School. So you'll be seeing those things happen during the year. And then, next, in our next council meeting on the 20th, you'll see quite a few actions that took place at our land use meeting that will be finalized. And our next meeting will be March 4th, on a Monday night, at 5:00 here in the chambers.
All right, thank you. We'll skip Federac, as the chair is out. But let's move on to Lodging Tax Advisory Committee report, Councilmember Lydia Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. There's going to be no meeting in February, and our next meeting is going to be March 13th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Regional Committees report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. On February 14th, at 7:00 p.m., is the first PIC meeting of the year for 2024. And we'll be talking about the schedule, regional board and committee appointments. I don't know if anyone on council applied for any of those additional opportunities. We'll be talking with AWC about their legislative update, orientation to what PIC is, and upcoming issues, and update on the King County Homeless Authority, and future levies and ballot measures in King County. Anyone on the council can attend. This is a complete Zoom virtual meeting. Sometimes they're half... You can go to attended in person and also attended on Zoom, but you just need to let SCA know that you want to come, and they'll send you the link. SCA is also having a Lunch and Learn Zoom meeting on 2/29, from 12:00 to 1:00, which will be learning about the juvenile justice and the future of secure juvenile detention in King County, because of the recent announcement of our King County Executive. That is from 12:00 to 1:00. However, on the very same day, from 12:30 to 1:15, AWC is holding a workshop for a briefing on attending NLC. And so I've asked SCA if they will adjust their times, because they have fewer people to adjust times for, and I haven't heard back, because they're both occurring at the same time. And they're both pretty important to go to. I attended the Women in Municipal Government Leadership Board meeting last week, and one of the interesting things we talked about is, around the country, council members are feeling unsafe, especially in their own chamber and leaving their chambers, and they're asking for more security, which is a sad thing, but happening all over. And I'll be attending the Asian Pacific American Municipal Officials Board meeting this week. But on Saturday is Lunar New Year, and Federway is such a diverse community. I thought we would just bring that up so that people know that on February 10th, which is Saturday, it's Lunar New Year of the Dragon. And traditionally, the dragon is a symbol of strength and power. It's associated with good fortune, wisdom, success, protection, and masculinity. And so we have a lot of Asian folks in our community, and people all over celebrate Lunar New Year. So, Happy New Year.
All right, thank you. Council President.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
I also have a regional meeting report.
Oh, please.
It's the ILSJC Regional Law Safety Justice Committee. So that meeting was on January 25th, and the topic of discussion was King County's commercially sexually exploited children task force. And they talked about their mission, and they talked about resources, and how they can support young youth who have been sexually exploited here in the county. So, yeah, and so that was a great discussion about it. And if people are interested, there's more information on the King County website on the sexually... commercially sexually exploited youth in our county. And then, some of the resources they have is the foster care through Connect Up program, and the community-based advocacy for youth. And they also offer resources, informal training, confidential consultations, networking, and finding other services for these youth who have been sexually exploited in our county. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the work you're doing. Council President.
Well, as the mayor has already said, at our next meeting on the 20th, at 4:30, we'll be having a special presentation on what the maintenance facility will look like, you know, the old Steel Lake Maintenance Facility, how we're... What we'll be doing with that, and our visioning process for that, and the possibility of building a second story onto that building to prevent or preclude City Hall from having to move, so that we can move some of the people in this facility over to that facility and stay in this building a lot longer. It would save you a lot of money. That's a time for you to... That's your money. You need to come and weigh in on what you think, whether we should... What we should do. And so that will be a very important meeting for you as a community to attend. And then, Mayor, are we going to have a discussion at the next meeting about what we'll be doing in our lobbying in DC? Will Tanya be making a presentation?
Yep.
Okay. So, when we go to Washington, DC in March, for the National League of Conference of Cities, it's not just for conferences, it's so we can lobby for money on your behalf. And so, Tanya will be making a presentation, she just found out, at our next meeting, to talk about what we're going to be asking for. See, we get money from different areas. We get money through grants. We get money through private grants. We get money from the federal government, the state government, and then money from our budget. And a lot of these projects that we do, part of the money comes from the federal government, part comes from the state, and part comes from our own pocket. And so it's very important to get that federal money, so that we can get the other... Get the projects moving. A lot of them are transportation projects. So we'll be reporting back to you once we get back from DC on how successful we think we were moving forward.
And I think you've seen an earlier draft of that legislative agenda, and we're scheduling meetings. And by "we," Amy Glendon, who helps the council, is helping to arrange. We've got our federal lobbyists, and we'll be meeting not only with our congressman, but our two U.S. senators as well, and anybody else that we can. There is actually a full day at this National League of Cities Conference devoted to Hill Day. Council President?
The other thing is, just to let you know, this is just a little thing. But, you know, I was a legislator in Olympia, and I can tell you things that I remember. I remember when people brought me little things. I remember... When you're a state senator, a U.S. Senator, Congressman, there are I don't know how many cities across Washington State. And for you to... How many?
281.
Thank you. 280. Thank you. Thank you. So, when you're... How do you stand out? Well, you stand out when you go in full delegation. You stand out when you're forceful. You stand out when you go back every month and say, "Here's my letter. This is what we're looking for. This is what we're looking for in our community." You need to stand out. And so we're even going to take a little basket, just so you know, of items from the city of Federway, to give to the legislators. There's just three, so that they can remember who we are. So, anyway, thank you. They're small things, but they make a difference.
All right. Like last year, remember, we gave Congressman Anna Smith a picture of our... A framed picture of our flagpole and the big crowd. And so, yeah, we'll do that. That'll be a lot of fun. All right, now we're on to consent agenda. These items on consent agenda have gone through committee, can be passed all at once. I'll read them, and I'll ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate considerations. Item A, minutes for the January 16th, 2024, regular meeting. Item B, AP vouchers, 11-1823 through 12-1823. Payroll vouchers, 11-123 through 11-3023. AP vouchers, 12-9... This is C. AP vouchers, 12-1923 to 1-1724. And payroll vouchers, 12-123 to 12-3123. Item D, monthly financial report, November 2023. E, Economic Development ARPA Program, City Marketing Program. F, Parks Portable Toilet Services Contract. G, HVAC Controls Updates... Upgrades, excuse me. Council, are there any items on A through G that you want to pull for separate consideration? Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to pull E, Economic Development ARPA Program. We pulled the other two to council business, and I think that this should be also discussed under council business.
All right. Council, any other motions? All right. Council President, do you have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I move approval of items A through D and items F through G.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
But a motion, a second, to move the listed items. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matters passed unanimously?
Mayor, where do you want to talk about economic development? Where do you want to put it under council business?
Item E, why don't we do that first, on economic development programs? Now we're on to council business. So item E will be... We'll just take that first in regard to council business. All right.
Don't we need to have a motion and a second to do that, to move it?
Not to pull something, yeah. Okay. So, Tanya, you ready? All right, now we're on council business. And why don't we... The item that was pulled from consent agenda, Economic Development ARPA Program, City Marketing Program. Do you have that available?
Yes, a question for Mayor, Council President, and the council. We have two variations of the presentation. So we have the presentation from Federac. It's too late on the East Coast for the company to present, so we have that recording. We also have a printout, and we also have a PDF that we can present on the screen, and I can walk through.
Why don't you just put it on the screen?
Okay.
All right.
And I'll pass this out.
Okay.
You want the video or the presentation, Mayor?
What's that?
The video or the presentation?
The presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, council members. Tanya Carter, your Economic Development Director. The item that is up for discussion this evening was an item that was brought forth to Federac several weeks ago. It is a program that was funded, or is proposed to be funded from ARPA funding, from the economic development allocation. And the... I will just briefly recap the background on this. The goal of the City Marketing Program is to ensure that Federway is consistently kept a top of mind for investors, developers, and tourists, as well as businesses from outside of the city and the region. So consistently top of mind means that these target audiences have Federway in mind when they want to build, invest in commercial real estate, when they want to travel and visit, and when they want to relocate a business. So the City Marketing Program is targeted for brand recognition and brand recall for the city, to build in, invest in, and develop as well as visit. So, the proposal that you have before you, as I So, the proposal that you have before you, as I mentioned, was presented by DCI Development Counselors International. And the one of the heads of the company was presenting, so I will just briefly go through the presentation that they presented at the FedRAC meeting. The copies are the same ones that you have on, in front of you. So, essentially, what the goal of this organization is, is they, as a summary, have worked with over 500 cities, counties, states around the country. They've been in business for many, many decades. They have locations all over the country. And as an example, on your copy, you do have several examples of several cities, states, and counties that they have worked with in the past. So, this presentation is just a high-level overview of what the process would look like should we engage with them. So, there are essentially four different stages to the process. The first is a research and discovery phase. The second is based on the research, creating storytelling and messaging. The third is then taking the research, analyzing it, and synthesizing it into a marketing strategy. And that strategy would, of course, include scope, schedule, budget. So, you know, how much are they going to do? What timeframe will it be done in? And, you know, allocating the rest of the budget for it. And then, the fourth phase is something that is, I think, kind of the meat of the whole process, which is the implementation. And so, I'll just briefly go through each one of these phases as a recap from the FedRAC, which is also available to view online, should anyone want to see the whole presentation. So, in Phase One, the research phase, the organization will send several representatives out here to do an immersion tour. That will include discussions with council, various stakeholders, and basically take a look at the city. And again, to reiterate, this is a program designed to speak to and address issues and, let's say, information that investors, developers, businesses from outside of the region, tourists would be interested in. So, the second part of the research and discovery phase is essentially a target industry analysis. So, taking a deeper dive into just the city of Federal Way, what the industries are that are a main focus or should be or could be a main focus for Federal Way, as well as looking at the workforce and talent markets. So, what kind of workforce do we need? What kind of workforce could we attract? And then, the third part is just doing an audit of what is actually out there right now for and about Federal Way that targets those audiences that we want to speak to. Phase Two, key messages. So, developing three to five key messages for investors, developers, businesses, tourists, and also creating a value proposition. What's special about Federal Way? What's interesting and different about Federal Way that might attract, you know, one of those prospective audiences to come and seek out Federal Way? Phase Three, this is kind of a more tangible deliverable. It's a marketing strategy that will be developed. And the marketing strategy, I won't read through everything here, but it's all classic, you know, marketing strategy and implementations that we know, everything from digital advertising to, you know, direct outreach in person at trade shows. Then, also, a budget will be developed as well as a timeline. And then, something that was requested by several of the council members was about metrics. So, as you know in advance, because we don't, we haven't determined what exactly we will need to use to address these target audiences, we can't exactly say what type of metrics we'll have, but these are just some of the examples on the screen and also in your handout of the types of metrics that we would be including. So, again, we don't know exactly what it will be until we actually have the strategy in front of us. But, for example, we have how many websites visits, what kind of engagement there is on those websites, conversions, which I can talk about a little bit on the next slide, earned media impressions, social media campaign engagement, so how many people actually engage, look at our, you know, what we post, et cetera. So, there's immediate, midterm, and long-term. So, those are all kind of different metrics. And then, this is just a, kind of an excerpt from one of their campaigns. And again, I won't go into detail on all the words, but essentially, it's a sales funnel or an engagement funnel. And as you see, this is pretty normal as far as like how many target audiences you reach out to, how many actually will engage with whatever it is that you're pushing out, and how many actually kind of click through or consider or, you know, contact and reach out to do business. Then, lastly, in the implementation phase, these are, we just reviewed kind of the metrics that would be the KPIs on this implementation. So, whatever we would decide in the end to implement, which would be the most effective for the types of audience that we're trying to attract. This is another picture that kind of gives a little bit more detail on the types of items that would be included in the marketing strategy. So, anything from building campaigns for talent attraction to really creating a lot of, you know, media in-depth content that would be interesting for those target audiences to engage with, public relations, et cetera. And I, unless the council would like, I won't go through the case studies, but they are in your packet. And I can just whiz through these and you can see the types of marketing collateral that was created. And again, there are reasons why this type of collateral is created and the way that it was formatted and where it was pushed out. So, even though we don't have the whole story behind it, you can see kind of a taste of the high quality that's presented, the different types of collateral that's created, and, you know, what something like this for Federal Way, for developers, investors, businesses could look like. And that is it.
Can you go to the financials? How much of, there are two things I'd like you to address.
Sure.
Number one, how much money are we talking of ARPA money?
Sure.
And it seems like there were two options, but could you run through that? And then, we want your professional opinion on why we should do this.
Great. So, to answer the first question, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three that you see on your screen would be $65,000. And that is essentially for everything included that's listed here. Phase Four is roughly a year, so about 10, 10 and a half months. And essentially, that would be $120,000. And that $120,000, you know, if you want to do quick math, would be roughly $10,000, $12,000 a month. And that would go for the development of whatever marketing that we decide would be necessary for those target audiences, as well as pushing it out, as well as the analytics, as well as, you know, all of the kind of reporting and backend work. So, essentially, soup to nuts from investigation to delivery.
Why do this?
Essentially, as many of you know, what the mantra is for economic development this year is getting Federal Way on the map in the minds of businesses, investors, developers, and tourists. And so, the city has never embarked on something like this. So, the two biggest reasons that I would say is, number one, I like to call this like an army of silent salespeople. So, economic development, as everyone knows, is a very small department. So, this would be like having thousands and thousands of salespeople to sell Federal Way all across the country, all across the world. So, that is a really, really effective use of money if you translate it into that way, $10,000 a month for literally having communication around the world. And the second is really to start changing the narrative and really, you know, put some positive information out there about all of the amazing things that we have here in Federal Way.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember McDonald, do you have a question?
Yeah. My question is, what website would they be working on? I know we have a couple that are underneath your guy is domain, but what website, if they make decide like recommendations and changes, is it going to be the single page you guys have in the city or is it one of the other websites you guys have?
Thank you for the question. There is not a determination of any website yet that they would work on. If it was determined, for example, that the investors, developers, and businesses that we want to target look at different either magazines or if they go to trade shows or, you know, do something like that and that's the best way to communicate with them, that would be the strategy they would recommend because they wouldn't want to waste money on building a website if the best way to communicate with those targeted audiences would be in person or, you know, at a different venue.
Got you. And then, they would be redirecting them back to the main site that you guys currently have then?
So, yes, that, but then there is a separate project that we are auditing, you know, all of our websites. And so, it could come to bear that all of our competitor cities and all the competitive, you know, locations that are, let's say, competitive to Federal Way, use separate websites instead of being tied to a city website. So, that could possibly be a consideration. But, we won't have that information until the audit on that separate project is done. But, we'll certainly present it to you.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Doby, then Councilmember Lydia Sepadossen.
Just a couple of questions. One, when I look at the budget number, does that include the tax or the, is there a tax on this?
No, it's all-inclusive.
It's all-inclusive. And, you know, as I think about this, you know, we had in just a customer comment, Anna Patrick came up and talked about the need to generate more revenues to do things. This is kind of like investing in ourselves to be, have our own marketing company so we can generate more, more business, more tax rates. And so, I think it's a good idea that we move forward with this.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a question. It's, on Saturday, you had that magazine, it's at Washington?
That's right.
With the front page.
Yeah. Would you talk about the Site Selector Magazine? Would you talk about that, please?
Sure. So, part of this overall program that economic development is embarking on is engaging with Site Selector Magazine. And they publish a Washington guide every two years. So, we were able to get in on this two-year publication that, among other things, is not only distributed nationally and internationally, but the Department of Commerce, when they go on their missions to anything from the Paris Trade Show to Select USA in Washington DC, they bring this Washington guide, which is essentially a magazine of all of the different cities in Washington. And we were able to garner the inside front cover for Federal Way. And it has a great, you know, photo and call-out that says Federal Way is open for business and investors and developers welcome.
Yeah. I was at a Valley Communications Meeting with all the mayors from the Valley and South King County. And the mayor of Renton, who's owned a business in that community for 30 years, just said, how did you, he plops the magazine and opens it up and says, how did you get this placement? And he says, I was at a, you know, I was at, he was at a big regional meeting and they were like, how do, how do we get, you know, right there? So, great job. Councilmember Honda?
So, in 2004, we had the same placement in that magazine. And I still had that at home, so I brought it in and showed Paul the other night or last night, which is really cool to, twice in, you know, a short time. So, it seems like 2004 was a short time. It's been a while, but.
Yeah. So, my question is, and I know I asked this before, but I'm going to ask it again. This is not a rebranding because we've tried to do that here at the city and we had a lot of pushback from our, the people who live here that they didn't want us to spend money on that. This is not a rebranding.
That is correct. Councilmember Honda?
We're not going to change this.
Yes. So, branding unfortunately is one of those terms that's very fuzzy. So, when you say a rebranding, just to make sure that everyone understands, we do not have any intention of changing anything in the style guide of Federal Way, which would include the city logo, the city colors, the city tagline. So, anything you see, you know, behind the dais, none of that would be touched, addressed, or changed in any way.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
I just wanted to just mention that the meeting we're going to have with Kemper Development Properties in Bellevue is moving forward. And so, we'll be having some discussions pretty soon about when we'll go. But Kemper Freeman, who developed Bellevue Square, said that you can plan as a retail organization or as a government, but unless you have the community involved and you're planning together, you're not going to go anywhere. So, basically, we're going to go learn from them and see what we can develop in our community. So, that's still in the process. So, we'll be letting you know soon.
Very good. Okay. This was pulled off consent. Would you like to make the motion, Councilmember?
I move approval of item E on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second to move item E from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. All right. Now, let's go on to 7A, economic development ARPA program, Start to Cart program.
So, Tanya Carter, your Economic Development Director, Mayor, Council President, council members, the second program that we have tonight, we actually have Member Marketplace, who is the organization that has made the proposal. They are on the line and are prepared to present, but I will just give a brief summary of the program. So, this was also presented at the FedRAC committee meeting several weeks ago. So, the same presentation will be presented again tonight. But, just to recap, the financial impact of this, as mentioned, is part of the economic development allocation of the ARPA funding. And then, the background information is essentially that City of Federal Way has, we actually just have the new numbers, so we have over 4,000 licensed businesses in Federal Way. And many of those businesses are mom-and-pop's, brick and mortars, anything from a grocery store to, to a bookstore, to a restaurant. And so, what we are proposing is a, an education program. So, it's a six-week program that will essentially take a brick and mortar from cart, from cart to start. And that is a presentation that you will see this evening from Sherry Edelson. She is the owner of Member Marketplace. They also work with many states, counties, cities around the country. So, this is a tried and true program. And because it is a very simple platform and is a very simple interface, anybody can join, anybody can learn how to open up an online shop. This does not preclude anyone from having multiple shops, which is very commonplace these days to have anything from a Shopify to an Etsy account. So, we will just, I'm not sure who I defer to, to make sure that she's on the line and allow her to present, introduce herself and present.
Stephanie, is that, can you facilitate that or Dominique Thomas?
Yeah, she's on the line.
Oh, she's on the line? All right. Welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for having me again. Good to see you. Again, my name is Sherry Edelson. I am the CEO of Member Marketplace. And we do work with cities, counties, states all over the US to help their small businesses sell online through shared platforms. We're proposing the Start to Cart program for Federal Way, helping to elevate your local small businesses from just brick and mortar to click and order. And the problem we're addressing really was highlighted by the COVID-19 pandemic where you saw the fundamental shift of consumers looking to buy online, to shop online, as we didn't leave our homes for a period of time. And even now, as we're back to work, it's hard to get out to local small businesses in the timeframes and the open hours that they have. And then, on the other side of that is, small businesses aren't necessarily all equipped in the same manner to be able to sell online. There's tons of different platforms. There's lots of different options. There's different ways to list your products online. How do you handle shipping? What does any of those processes look like? And for small business owners with a limited time, budget, sometimes even technical capacity, how do we help them move into this next era of digital commerce and kind of blend their in-store retailing and then be able to do an online version as well? And where does the city come in that? So, the solution is a kind of threefold, business education, really supporting businesses from starting, growing, running their businesses in general. And this ties into the other program with SBDC, I know that's coming up next, but working in conjunction to be able to support small businesses in the next era of kind of that digital commerce and then elevating their online presence. So, whether they already are online, how do we help make sure that they are found online, that the quality of their information, that their photos, that their links are available? And the other side of that is effective e-commerce strategies. So, teaching them what it looks like to set up storefronts, to integrate payment gateways, to, again, being able to fulfill orders through online commerce and get paid. What does that look like? And we do that through a shop local marketplace program. So, it's one platform that can really serve as the basis for this, this teaching for businesses that are brand new or even existing for several years, but maybe haven't got yet online. What does it look like to set up a storefront? To do their product photography and do it in a right way where consumers want to engage and look at that product more and click into it very, you know, the photo is the first thing they'll see. How do we help them click into that, learn more about that product, add it to cart? How do they help determine their shipping rates and their processes? What should they choose for payment processing? So, really having a support team and a platform to learn all of those basics. And what that does, it creates a level playing field for all of those businesses to be able to sell online. So, we know that BIPOC businesses, and that was one of the pieces somebody had mentioned earlier, but they're typically, it's not served as much in this kind of a market. How do we help level up every single business in the community, whether they've existed for a long time, whether they're brand new? How do you help and support and shop from those different business demographics as well? So, you can sort down by BIPOC businesses, by women-owned businesses, by veteran-owned businesses, and some of those different demographics within the community that exist? How, when you're heading out to Washington, can you take gifts that have Federal Way branding on them and go out and serve that to somebody in Washington and say, hey, look what happened? This is from a business in our own community. This is from a business in our own community, and by the way, you can go back to our Marketplace shop and discover from them. It opens up that window into the community, so it helps businesses or consumers within the area not have to go out and window-shop from every single individual business. They can go to one platform, discover, and buy from them on the platform, but then also those from not in the community, they can go and discover the businesses that exist and shop from them purposely. Maybe, I know you guys have a welcome home, I believe, for Federal Way. How do they, if they've moved away, or they no longer are there, how do they still shop from home, even if they aren't locally there anymore? And orders are then, well, you know, eventually coming from just general random internet searches as well. So helping them be online, get that presence online, establish it through a fair platform. And then, when and if they're ready, they can also expand into other platforms. We are, we do sync with Shopify and Square, so they can pull in products in there. Or if they're already online, they can manage and merge their stores into the platform as well. The cohort program specifically is working with those very brand-new entrepreneurs or those businesses that need the extra hand-holding. We can put through the Start to Cart Program, where it is a six-week course working on all of those basics, and rather than just the information that's handed out to them, it's kind of a hand-holding process, although they'll walk out with, coming from just that brick-and-mortar to having a full online cart for people to come and shop from. And they also benefit from the shared network of the other partners in their cohort program as well, and reach kind of the full internet versus just those who are local to their retail brick-and-mortar storefront. We've worked with businesses across the state, or across the country. Some businesses come to us, and they, you know, struggle to get online, dilly-dallyed around for several years, never quite got it, and this was a simple platform. It's really small-business friendly, so they're able to get up, get online, and be selling that same day and do it within a supportive environment. We have other businesses, again, that, maybe it's restaurants, they just sell their gift cards or have another means to be able to sell their gift cards without having to turn their whole website into an e-commerce option. And it really kind of meets each business where they're at, and then again, they have a supportive team to be able to sell online. They have that free platform to be able to sell, and then businesses then have increased their sales, and it varies depending on the business and the type of the product. And we have a playbook to really help them, you know, be one of the more successful vendors on there and how they're selling their items. Some community results, again, we've worked with communities all over the SBDC program. We work with the City of Santa Fe. Theirs is an interesting case, because it's with the tourism department. So about 80% of their orders come in from outside of New Mexico entirely. So people who have visited Santa Fe or want to visit Santa Fe and are able to shop it virtually through there. We work with the cohort program in California. There have been over 1,500 businesses that have applied to be part of that cohort program, and then we can manage and work with any kind of local organizations who also want to be a part of it and help them be able to sponsor and fund some marketing initiatives too, to fund extra funds into the program. We've outlined it, it's altogether, the three years, it's about 80,000, but really, the first year is pushing in the initial boulder uphill, bringing on those businesses, revamping the ShopFederalWay Marketplace, getting the businesses on there, attracting it, and helping to do some initial marketing initiatives that are kind of at that base level. And we have it streamlined where we can start to tier some funding from the small businesses as well, but keep it very cost-effective or free for them to be able to sell in there, and then sponsor a small little part of the marketing initiative, starting out at just $10 a month, so really affordable for small businesses. In year two, as we get that ball rolling, drawing down the costs from the city, because we know that this is ARPA funding, it doesn't exist, you know, indefinitely. So how do we draw down those costs, help the, swing the pendulum a little bit more to businesses, but then also work with either outside organizations or other sponsors that want to be able to be a part of the marketplace to help fund some of those marketing campaigns and the small businesses on there as well? And then just keeping it in year three as a small portion of the Federal Way budget, keeping it as a Federal Way initiative, but then again, even more businesses being able to take a part of it, and then those other sponsors to be able to carry some of the other, the weight from there, as it's that marketplace network effect and marketplace effect are really going, how can we draw down the funding from the city? That's the overall main portion of the program, but happy for any questions that anyone may have.
Well, thank you for joining us from your remote location. Appreciate it. Council questions? Councilmember McDaniel?
I'll go first. Can you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
I just wanted to get clarifications. So the first year is $45,000 investment. In year two, it's 22, which is 50% taken care of by the city, and then year three is 25 at 1120, 250. So is the actual cost about $45,000 per year for the service? Is it just broken up by city, and then in the future, some of the burden will be put on the businesses that are on the site?
There's some initial costs in the first year, too, that have to go with changing over some of the ShopFederalWay existing website, and onboarding and attracting some of those businesses. So there's a little bit more put into that first year that's just outside of it. So the e-commerce marketplace cost is about a 30% reduction in like the program management side, because we're not doing as much business attraction as we need to in that first year. But then reducing, there is a few marketing initial initiatives put into that first year as well, so reducing those and having that funded for the businesses. But yeah, all of the sectors are drawn down in that year, too.
Gotcha. And then in year three, if the city was the one to fund the program for the, all of the businesses and the businesses not required to pay, what, do you have a cost that would be associated with year three, then?
Year three, we still have it outlined as a minimum investment from small businesses as $10 a month, or, and then $10 for that marketing fee. So starting as low as that. So still keeping it affordable for some of those micro businesses, whether they're new or existing, or, and they just want to have a platform to be able to sell, but then allowing businesses that want more visibility, want more products, want to be able to be a part of more, maybe, marketing initiatives. How do we help them gain more of that visibility and traction in there, and then having them fund kind of a tiered approach? So still keeping that minimal investment for micro businesses, but then allowing businesses that want to have more presence in there, be able to fund more of it in that regard.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. The first cohort that's going to be part of this, do you know what number we're looking at? In terms of number of businesses that we're going to serve?
It's up to, up to 200, but, you know, it'll be divided, it just totally depends on, you know, who signs up, when they sign up, how they sign up. But we, you know, in the first instance, can have up to 200 on the platform.
So if we don't get the first 200 within this three-year, can it continue into whenever in the future so that they can still sign up and participate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So if someone were to buy something from ShopFederalWay Marketplace, would the sales tax remain with us?
So generally, the way that sales tax works is it's not at point of sale, it's at point of destination or delivery. So it's like all of the online shopping these days. If it's purchased in Federal Way and it stays in Federal Way, then we would, we would have the sales tax benefit. But if it's purchased in Federal Way and delivered to, you know, California, then the point of destination would receive the sales tax.
So all of the online shopping that's done and delivered to Federal Way, we're getting that sales tax?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So folks doing online shopping and having it delivered here in Federal Way to their residents or their businesses, we get that sales tax?
Correct.
Do we have a line item that shows how much we get from that? I know we've asked this before.
Steve Grimm, our Finance Director.
We don't have a line item for online, because a lot of our retailers are both brick-and-mortar and online.
I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's possible to pull that out. I don't know, Sheri, if you have any experience with that, if you've ever had that question of being able to pull out line items? I don't know that we could do that.
It depends on each state, and I know what it looks like for here in Iowa, and I have seen a few others. But there usually is a, your regular revenue, and sometimes there's ones, if it is non-taxable, you would pull out your non-taxable. If it went to another state where you didn't remit it, they would pull that out, but you're not, you're not separating your online from your brick-and-mortar or your other retail sales. So that individual business, you wouldn't, but you would able to, you may be able to see what is not taxable for Federal Way if it got pulled out in another way.
Secondly, do you have to be 18 and over to participate?
Sheri, I've never had that question. Do you, is it up to the cities to determine that?
Well, you have to be, you have to be an adult to contract, to enter in any kind of business contract. But go ahead, Sheri. Go ahead.
On our platform, as far as a seller for the platform, we typically go with a city business license or the requirement from our partner. So it goes by a city business license, and then the requirement's based on that for a seller. And then as far as a user of the website, I could look back at our terms, but I don't know if, it might be 13 is kind of the basic age of consent in that regard. But we do monitor our products that are, you know, on the marketplace for, you know, any adult products or anything that are not able to be serviced in there. But I don't know if it's an 18 or 13, or if that exact definition is in there in the terms and conditions, but I can look at that.
Well, you're legally incompetent to engage in any kind of contractual behavior before you're 18, so.
I'm just curious, because I know we have some kids in the high schools that are doing some, right. So, you know, getting them started at a young age and with this kind of support would be quite amazing.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And then my last question, and I was asked this today by someone who was reading our agenda. Do you, Sheri, have to have a business license in Federal Way to work with us? Yes? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Councilmember Dovi?
Just a clarifying question. How many businesses that take advantage of this would we consider to be a success?
Yeah, it's a great, yeah, if you, looking in the rearview mirror down the road.
I mean, I mean, what's our, what's our goal to have businesses, how many businesses? I think I heard 200 is kind of what we could do. What are we going to measure? What do you consider a success if we don't hit 200? I mean.
So maybe a two-part answer. The first part is, is that we do have our ShopLocal Federal Way website, which is just essentially Yellow Pages. And so the intent is that, you know, all the businesses at least have a reference on, you know, on the marketplace with a name and, you know, their location. And then that would be kind of the first part of it. And then the second part of it is, you know, two-part answer is, first off, I don't know what Sheri's experience is with other cities, but I think for us, it would be something that I would be grateful to discuss, maybe in a little bit more detail and not just on the dais with a metric, to just make up my number. But I'd be very happy to discuss that thing. It's a fabulous question.
I mean, the reason we ask the question, we spend tremendously more money on this, on other projects, to help a very small, limited number of people. So this is kind of like, hey, if, you know, if we get 10, or 20, or 15, I mean, or 50, I mean, it's better than what we're doing now. And so that's why I was curious. I mean.
I would be happy to.
I doubt we'd get 100%, we're going to get 100%, but are we, are we happy with 20%? Or whatever the number is, I think that anything we could do to help our businesses is probably a good thing to do.
Happy to discuss that. I think it was a great, great question. And maybe just to add to what you shared, when we did survey businesses, it was one of the top three answers that they provided, which was top of the mind, that kept them up at night, is needing more help to promote their businesses.
All right, I see. Councilmember Sepadossen, your light's on?
Yes. Does their income matter at all?
I'm not sure I understand.
In terms of, in terms of us, in terms of them participating in the program?
You mean how much they sell online, or?
No, how much they already, I mean, do we look at their income? Yeah, annual income from whatever.
No, I had never, that had never crossed my mind, but I will also defer to Sheri if she has ever had that issue come up.
We do have with the State of Iowa, we work with them as a partner, and one of their qualifications, they have to be a small business under $3 million in annual revenue. And so that's a qualification that they have to agree to when they're signing up for the platform. And if needed, if there are certain qualifications, too, we can have that on there. So it's up for your determination on that.
So that also could be a point of discussion, if council would like, that we can investigate that more and provide more detail on that.
Okay, I don't see, oh.
I have one more. I mean, I don't think we should discriminate if somebody makes $100,000 or $20 million. I mean, if it's good to, for our city, for somebody to use this service, why are we going to bracket it to a low number? I mean, make it available to anybody that wants to take advantage of the Federal Way business.
And I wasn't saying that. I just want to make sure that we know what the standards are.
All right. And since your light is on, Councilmember, do you have any motion?
I move to approve of the proposed Start to Cart ARPA Grant Program.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have a comment.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I've looked at this a couple of times, and I've already made my comments in the past. This is the one thing where I feel like we're, as a city, we're kind of bleeding into a section that I don't feel the city should be in. We're playing with the e-commerce side. I think it sits better with the Chamber or another company. It's like going into a business and saying, what, you know, point of sale system do you have to have in there? Now, with that said, I won't be voting for it, but my caveat is, if it does pass, I'll do whatever I can to make it a success and try to get some business to sign up for it. I just feel like this is outside of what the city should be working on. Thank you.
All right. All right. There's been a, anybody else? It's been a motion, a second, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Dovi?
Councilmember Sepadossen?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovi?
Aye.
Councilmember Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1.
All right, thank you very much. Item B, Economic Development ARPA Program, Digital Literacy Program. Presentation from Tanya.
Surprisingly, I'm still here. Your Economic Development Director, Tanya Carter, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. Our third program was also on the Federac Agenda recently, and there has just been one update that is also in the agenda packet, so I won't read or review this, except for just to say that the request was made from the Federac Committee that the Digital Literacy Program that would be hosted by the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC, who is here this evening, with Rich Chocley and Andrew Powers to present, there was a request made to double the ARPA funding from $15,000 to $30,000, and to double the length of the program from one year to two years. So that adjustment has been made, and if it so pleases the council, they are here to present and give a summary of the program, which is now a two-year program for $30,000, and it is a digital literacy program for our businesses.
All right.
So I will hand it over to.
Rich Chocley.
Rich Chocley.
Rich, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, thanks for having us again tonight. As Tanya mentioned, this is, what we're proposing is really a two-year project for $30,000. I'd like to give you a little bit of background. We're calling this Digital Literacy, but the definition can be defined in many different ways, and so we'll tell you a little bit about what we're proposing. But this really comes from what we see in the businesses that we work with. And it was highlighted during the pandemic, where we saw a lot of businesses and employees working from home, and the digital literacy, or the lack thereof, was really, was really highlighted. What we do see is that businesses who are literate with digital tools, they have better profitability, they're more stable, and they contribute to our business success locally. What we're focused on is really helping them create efficiencies using tools internally, monitoring results, implementing those results, and then managing day-to-day operations. And some of the, in just a minute, Andrew will talk about the programs and his background in that. But what we're really hoping to do with this is to increase that skill set. We find that in addition to just a lack of comfort with digital tools, those of our businesses who have English as a second language have even more struggles. Those that have challenges with financial analysis and writing skills also have more of a challenge. If we can help mitigate that, give them some tools, we're going to give everybody a better ability to be, have a stable business, a profitable business, and contribute to our, to our community. The, what we're proposing is really a development and then delivery of these four classes over a two-year period, essentially teaching one class a quarter. They are designed to be modular, but someone can jump in in the middle and have an outcome with those as well. So what I'd like to do is just turn it over to Andrew, let him tell a little bit about his background, a little bit about the classes and the implementation of that.
All right, welcome.
Thank you for having me, counsel. So when we talk about these classes of the digital literacy classes that we'll be presenting, we're talking about being able to have businesses come in, but the individuals come in and actually learn things like business plans, things like cash flow documents, and other business tools in which they can actually walk in, learn the basics, utilize AI to actually construct those documents, and they can actually walk out with something at the end. So I didn't give a bit about my background, but I used to be, I used to run a nonprofit where I teach kids about new emerging technologies like semit. where I teach kids about new emerging technologies like semedication. And from there, I became a Google Level One and Level Two educator. So this is kind of what I do. And putting in the workshops allows individuals to come in, learn the basics, produce the documents, and from there, they are actually now able to walk into the SBDC, SBDC Center and talk and engage and have documents that are pre-designed, so that we can now talk about how we can take their businesses to the next level. In general, the concept is, these are modules, you can come in at any one, and they can build upon each other. But the whole goal is that every time a person walks into this class, they're able to walk out with something. So that's the gist of that.
All right. Council President?
You might want to, Andrew, tell people where they can walk in and what the Small Business Development Center is at the hub.
Okay. So the Small Business Development Center is where people can come in, specifically business owners, and we help them with things like writing a business plan and.
Location?
Ah. And when we talk about these classes, we're talking about doing classes at the library and the federal way hub, which is in federal way, and utilizing the federal way libraries as center point for actually having these workshops and classes. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Seppa Dawson?
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. One is, would any of these people come from, or are you working with StartZone for this cohort, or for these people, or no?
As many of you might know, we have two programs at Highline College in our Economic Development Group, our Small Business Development Center and our StartZone program. And we would be, these would be rolled out to any business in federal way. And so, yes, it would include businesses we work with our StartZone program as well.
Okay. And this question might be for Tanya. So would any of these individuals also be part of the Start to Cart program? Or is there a way that?
Absolutely. There is a lot of cross-pollination, so all of the programs will be available to all of the, you know, any business in federal way that is interested. And so it will, it will be promoted at the digital literacy class, as well as cross-pollinating with the e-commerce class to the digital literacy. And one side note that I don't think that we mentioned, just for, you know, for the public benefit, this city does sponsor one-on-one consulting for businesses at no charge. So that is something that we do every year. So I think we will have it in our presentation next month at Federac, but just at a high level, I think, Rich, how many businesses did we, did you service in federal way, like roughly 50? Yeah, I think it was around 50 businesses, and also the SBDC was helping to secure, I think, around half a million dollars in loans for those businesses. So it is a really successful program for businesses in federal way, and the city does sponsor it.
Thank you. And I think it would be great if we could be invited to a graduation or something like that when that happens.
It's a great idea. All right.
Great.
Okay. Councilmember Seppa Dawson, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move approval of the proposed Digital Literacy ARPA Grant Program.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And they're passed unanimously. Thank you so much. Tanya, and Andrew and Rich, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Great job. Okay, now we're on to item C, the Federalway Community Center, Federalway Community Center Temporary Locker Room Rental, presentation by John Hutton, Autumn Gresset, Jason, and also Aleef are the director of the community center. So, Autumn, you want to get us started?
I'm here tonight to talk about the locker room renovation update. With that, there's been a lot of developments in the last week, as you are aware of. We'll switch the slide here, if the clicker's going to work. There we go, okay. In preparation for the locker room renovations, the overall, and the overall building envelope study, standard testing was conducted by MedTalks Northwest, engaged by our contractor, Inova Architects. These tests revealed the presence of toxic mold contaminants, specifically in the locker room area, prompting a need for swift action. The locker rooms at the Federalway Community Center were immediately closed upon us getting that information, and they were closed for critical remediation efforts and part of a comprehensive renovation project to guarantee a safe and enjoyable space for our visitors and guests and members. You may ask the question, do we have to provide locker rooms? The answer to that is yes. In order to meet King County health requirements, yes, we do have to have locker rooms. So we are moving toward bringing in temporary locker rooms, and that's why we're here this evening. Next steps, temporary locker room rentals. We have been reaching out, our entire staff has been reaching out, kind of nonstop, working this problem. Royal restroom locker room trailers, we'll have 12 individual units inside six trailers. Those will be placed behind the building, and you'll see a map in a moment. Additional operational costs will include tenting, temporary fencing, electrical sewer, permitting, and site prep. So all of those things to place the temporary locker rooms. Selective demolition will, we'll start to solicit bids for selective demolition and mold abatement. This is part of the original $1.7 million budget funded by ARPA and the overall construction plan. Due to the acceleration of the closure, this portion is being moved up in the timeline. So here is a map of the Federalway Community Center. The bright yellow is the party rooms. As soon as you walk into the front doors, you see the party rooms. Those have been transformed into a temporary changing space. And as you see, so they'll walk into there, change, and then, this is currently, they change there, and then they follow those red arrows that you see out across the pool deck next to the lazy river, out the new door that was installed during the pool renovation and slide repair, out to the temporary locker room trailers that you see out behind the building. That is currently a grass area outside the senior lounge, and I know you're all familiar with the area. Yeah. Removing some blocking for you. We'll try to carry on here. So you can see where the temporary trailers would go on the grass area. So we're good there. This is an example of the temporary locker rooms that we would be renting. This is Royal Restroom Rentals. They're a big, huge company, and they do a really good job. This is an outside view of them. There would be six of these type trailers. Here's an inside view. So it's, think of a cabana that we have now, a completely isolated toilet, shower, change area. The original project budget is on the left. That shows the scope of work. Soft cost, 648, 530. Construction cost, including demo and mold abatement, which is being moved forward in this, of 1.4 million. Contingency at $201,470, for total of 2.3. So we knew when we had 1.7, that wouldn't be enough, and you've been informed of that, and you're aware of that. The budget on the right that you see is the temporary locker room rental budget. Temporary locker room rentals are $310,000, additional expenses of $250,000, for a total of $560,000. Some of this is slightly unknown. It's very early on. So some of the costs are slightly unknown. We're giving our very best estimate, and we hope that this would come in potentially a little lower, but we can't promise that at this time. That is things like sewer hookups and electrical for the trailers, water to the trailers, all of those things. In addition to site prep, we have to skin the grass, put gravel down, rent tents, those type of things would be all done for the year, so. So funding sources for this, temporary locker room rental, Finance Department Director Groom has been working with us, and so has Chase Donnelly, his assistant, to help us identify all of this funding. So we would draw down off the original 1.7 for these initial expenses. And for the selective demolition, this is, again, part of the original 1.7. That was in there to begin with, as was abatement. So the overall construction plan that was funded by ARPA, we did know we would have a shortage, and that has been, you've been informed of that, so. All updates and more information, we're trying to be incredibly transparent with our members, guests, the general public about everything. So we've, we've created a website or a webpage on our website that has been highly publicized. It's out everywhere. It's in everybody's inbox through Constant Contact. There's posters up at the community center, and lots of ways to get current information and updates. So that is being done now. And before I get to the policy question, Director Groom, we have identified for the known shortage, Park CIP funding until we get to the next budget adjustment. Would you like to say anything, Doc?
Tell, John, tell everybody what CIP means.
Capital Improvement Projects. That's, we have a budget within the Parks Department that has a balance more than sufficient to cover this.
Okay.
Right. We're, we're used to course correcting, and our normal process is to bring a budget amendment around April after we close the first quarter. We haven't quite closed the books on 2023 yet, but I do know that our Parks Capital Fund has got a balance of 2.3 million. So that alone gives us the backstop we need. As John mentioned, the existing approval for, using ARPA of the 1.7 million, we'll get them, we'll get them through the first quarter until we get to the budget adjustment.
All right. When did we first learn of the mold? The, the black mold, the dangerous mold?
The dangerous mold, we learned about on Thursday, and we closed the locker room. We notified the mayor, city council, and closed the locker room Friday, the very next day.
Were you aware of mold last year?
We were aware of potential for mold, some, a small amount of visual mold was observed by Rock Project Management in, in their initial inspection, and that required additional inspection. That was found in an isolated locked pipe chase. So that is where the mold was, not available to the public in any way, shape, or form. It was in a pipe chase, which is, for lack of a better word, a small hallway behind fixtures, and that's where you can, you can work on plumbing behind toilets or showers, in a confined area, lock and key, no public access to that area.
All right. All right. Did you have any more present?
Just the, the policy question, should the city council approve temporary locker room rentals and authorize the mayor to execute contracts necessary for the services? And in case there's anything I can't handle tonight, I do have some key members of our team, Deputy Director Jason Gerwin, Contract Administrator Autumn Gresset, and Community Center Manager Lee Felsworth are all here to assist if needed.
All right. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, just a question. What's the timeline? How long?
We anticipate being done in May of '25 totally, with the entire project. We're in design right now, getting ready for design.
So we'll have the temporary showers for?
Approximately a year.
What's that?
Approximately a year.
Okay. And is the number we have enough?
Yes, that, that's been, that's been figured out a year.
All right. Any other questions for John?
Just to clarify, councilmember, the number of, of lockers or the number of dollars?
Well, I mean, the temporary thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm asking.
Are the, are the locker rooms sufficient?
Yeah, is it?
Yes.
You're not going to come back and say we miscalculated and we needed five more?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We will not do that.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, so if I understand correctly, the locker rooms are shut down, the little space that used to be the party room is now going to be the lockers, and then these guys would strictly be for shower facilities then?
The change room right now would be the party rooms. Until the locker rooms get in, we'll evaluate as we go. But for right now, it's the party rooms are where the change rooms, and then people can shower in the, in the locker rooms. We also have procured lockers, temporary lockers, so people can lock their things in. Some of them have already arrived at the community center and are being assembled right now. So the public will have a place to lock their valuables.
Yeah. Just curious, because like, like I'd mentioned in some of the emails back and forth, I'm now a member of the community center. Actually, two weeks ago, I signed up, and last Thursday, the day you guys found the mold, I was showering in that place, so.
Excellent timing.
Yeah, it's awesome timing. I'm glad I signed up. With that said, you guys had mentioned you had found funds, you had funds already in your guys' account. What is going to get cut in order for this to happen then? Or what is not going to be built or?
We haven't identified, or reprioritized at this point. This has been first and foremost. So something will likely not get done in this timeframe to accomplish this, depending on where we go.
All right. My second one is, I have some concern of homeless using those as living facilities. So will we have any kind of management locks or anything? What is, what are we going to do as a city to make sure these don't turn into Seattle little townhouses?
We won't let that happen, number one. They are lockable, and we'll be applying whatever resource is needed to make sure that they're there for the members and guests and not for unauthorized people to be using.
Okay. And then you had mentioned the mold being found in a kind of crawl space area. Was that in the original Rock report, or was that in the most recent inspection?
That's what triggered the, in the initial inspection, they noticed a small area of mold concern, which triggered a much larger testing that was done, and we got those results last Thursday, which led to the closure Friday.
Gotcha. And then, kind of back to what Councilmember Dovi was talking about, the amount that we're looking at, the 560,000 will cover everything that needs to be done for this for one year until the lockers, that's what the estimate is, the guestimate is at this moment in time?
That's correct.
Okay, is there anything that we have, obviously, we don't know yet, but is there anything that's, anything brought up since we've had that number that may be needed to add to that?
Not at this time. We feel pretty confident tonight coming to you with that number.
Mm-hmm. And then the last one is, we have, the 1.7 has been authorized from ARPA. We're at 2.3, and then we're looking at 2.3 plus the 560. Is that what we're looking at, the final number for lockers?
That is correct.
All right. Have we talked about where that 600K difference from the 1.7 to 2.3?
At this point, the only thing we've identified is Parks CIP.
CIP, okay. Sorry, I have to now.
Which are sufficient funds in that, in that account. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah. You, you mentioned, on one of your first slides, you asked, does it have to be done? You said, according to county health regulation, it has to be done.
That's correct.
And so right now, is the pool able to be open?
Yes, we're, as long as we have a plan in place and moving forward, King County Public Health has said, we may operate the pools currently in the temporary situation until we can get these sourced, and as long as we're moving quickly, the goal is to have those potentially on-site as early as Monday.
All right.
That doesn't mean they'll be set up Monday, because we have to hook into the sewer, and there's a lot of things, but we're working feverishly toward that goal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. The original timeline was going to have the locker rooms completed in May of 2025?
Same timeframe, yes.
So because you don't have to close down one locker room and use the other, there isn't any way that this could be moved up and?
I'm not prepared to promise you that tonight. That is certainly a goal. Without having to phase, we're hoping that we could get a little speedier resolution, because the contractor doesn't have to mow up, start over, move out, move in, as through the phasing, they should be able to do the entire project all at once.
And you talked about it saying it's in the design phase. Is there, so it won't be the same design that we currently have there? You're going to change the design?
Not significant changes to the design. It'll be very, very similar, but it still has to be designed.
So the party room will be in, in use for, for a while for this issue. Where will parties be held? Because I know that we do a lot of parties there.
That's a really good question, and we are moving them. We have the ability to move a birthday party much easier than, say, a standing church rental with 100 people. And we have four or five churches that use the facility every single weekend. So it's easier for us to move a 12-person birthday party within, we have the preschool rooms, we have the classroom, so we'll be being very creative in our choreography as we move people throughout the building, because we, exactly correct, we do have many, many birthday parties.
So when I went back and I listened to the Parks meeting, the Federac meeting, and the council meeting where this was presented to us, and it was mentioned that for a couple it was mentioned that for a couple years previous, you had noticed issues in the locker room. So I'm sure that eventually that was gonna have to be, those issues were gonna have to be repaired at some point. When the pool was closed, was there any thought of starting the locker rooms at that point, knowing that you had ongoing issues in there?
Yes and no. Remember, only one pool was closed.
Right.
The other pool was incredibly busy, because all of the business that went from two pools went into one. And it's counted upon, that lap pool is incredibly popular and a needed amenity in the community for people's health and well-being. And so closing it down, we would have had to close both pools, even though one was perfectly functional. And we were incredibly busy. So shutting that down was not really a great viable option at that point. Plus, staff was completely at capacity with the slide project and the pool renovation that we did on the leisure pool, basically an entire renovation of that entire pool, to be really considering the locker room at that point, because we were running crazy busy at, in the pool and the community center.
With the, the new showers and bathrooms right outside where the senior lounge is, will they be able to be accessed through the senior lounge too?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, because the, the senior lounge has restrooms that service it just outside the hall.
Right.
In the hallway.
Well, people, but people couldn't access the showers through, through the, the senior lounge, the doors there?
We would not have them do that. Would not be ideal, because we'll have other projects or programs in the senior lounge. So we wouldn't want swimmers coming through a senior program, for instance.
I, I don't disagree, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's not the plan at this point.
And how long does it take to do environmental study for the, to see if there's mold in the air?
I, I can't, I don't know when the actual test was performed. We got the, the, it didn't take long, I don't think. Do any of you have that answer?
I believe the testing was done over two days, and they tested the entire facility. There was no mold found anywhere else in the building other than the locker rooms.
So during the course of the, the work, will that testing be redone, just to make sure that people working in the environment are safe? Or are they gonna have to be masked up and protected?
So when the mold remediation occurs, people will be in hazmat suits and have, have full face respirators on. And the way we're protecting locker rooms now is we've had a prescription prescribed to us by the architect, and so we have six mil plastic up, which is kind of that barrier. We've created a negative pressure in the HVAC to keep the air confined there. And the HVAC system, the recommendation was to not have the air recirculate through the building. Our HVAC system is already programmed that way, that the HVAC that serves the locker room and pool area does not recirculate throughout the rest of the building.
And my last question is, when I was reading through this study from the Rock Management Company, there was some talk about reusing some of the maybe faucets and those kind of things in the locker rooms. Will you still be doing that, and how do you make sure that they're okay to use?
And, and it's currently unlikely that we would reuse some of those.
Okay.
Likely, we'll, we'll go all with fresh, just, just for
Just.
all assurances and just peace of mind as, as professionals running this facility.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I did have one follow-up question. One of the things I did notice is I did talk to some residents who I work out with and stuff, and Facebook was one of the ways they found out. I, when I went on to the Facebook and noticed, and I had mentioned this earlier, the limitation on the comments. I'm curious to know who made that decision and why was the decision was made to limit open comments on that post?
I made that decision, and I made that decision because I found those immediate kind of attacking comments that were non-productive completely. We have lots of ways for people to reach out, through email, through voicemail, through phone calls. They can contact me directly, but I found it to be non-productive to just have a hammer fest on, on social media.
I disagree with that one, but you made your call.
All right. Thank you. All right. And Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
Yeah, yes, sir. I move approval of the proposed temporary locker room rental and associated work, and authorize the mayor to execute contracts necessary to accomplish the work.
Second.
It's been a motion. A second, is there any discussion? I see some lights on. Does anybody wanna talk? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your continued support. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, on item D is the confirmation of independent salary commission appointments. I, it's confirmation of my appointments. I appointed tentatively Greg Berusso and Gordon Bach, and this is the opportunity for council to confirm those independent salary commissioner members, tentative members. Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
Mayor, do you wanna explain what the independent salary commission is?
Oh, great opportunity. Thank you very much. It is absolutely imperative, and I think actually probably the law, that people should not, people serving the public office should not have any say whatsoever in their salary at all. And, and so therefore, something that I think has been very productive in the history of our community is to have an independent salary commission in which no communication, no, you know, lobbying, no statements, whatever, just an, an independent body that works with HR and to look at other comparables. And this is for not only my office and the salary, but also the city council, taking a look at what the comparables are in the region, in the state. And we just mentioned there are 281 cities, and some of them are, you know, close, some of them are, you know, just around the state. And so this is an opportunity, not an opportunity, a mechanism that we have established in our city code to ensure that we act as an organization of integrity and one that meets not only the letter of the law, but the spirit of it as well. And so they serve for a matter of, I think, two to four years, and, and then their decision is theirs. Yes, what's that?
And the council or the mayor cannot change the decision.
That's right.
But the public could, within a certain amount of days, the public could file a petition to go to a vote.
That's right.
But the council and mayor have no say in it.
That's right. City of Redmond had an incident, or had some experience.
Spokane too.
Yeah, so it is really important, you know, we work for you, and so if you see this, you know, whatever the result is, you have a right to participate in that. You could look that up and, but there are, there were some, you know, when, when ridiculous situations come up, like in Redmond and Spokane, the citizens, the residents of the community need to stand up. That happened as well down in Southern California. There was a, a very interesting situation down there. So it's very important in one of the smaller cities in LA County. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
It is amazing how across Washington, and even across the country, when you talk to council members from other parts of the country, how different council members and mayors are paid or compensated, and the different benefits that some cities have, some don't, some have none. Some council members around the country are not even, they're not compensated at all.
Right.
And some are highly compensated.
Yeah, I think there was, the, the community was, one of the suburbs in, in Los Angeles, in Los Angeles County was paying their people exorbitant, and it, it actually exposed something. So, well, we, we have very transparent government, and, you know, locally, regionally, and nationally, and so that's, if, if you see those results, they don't seem to make sense to you, you've got legal recourse. I see, Councilmember Doby?
I just have one question on the appointments. One of the individuals will be very, know what goes on, having been an elected official, but is also an elected official in the fire department.
Yeah.
Is that a conflict in any way?
It's a great question. Legal counsel?
I'll take a look at that really quick, because I know that there are some provisions for that, so.
Hold please.
Okay. Maybe we grab Bill. Hey, you want me to grab Bill? Hey, Bill, Cheryl Hurst left her jacket. Can you see if, maybe she just left it there a minute? Oh, okay, we wanna make sure she doesn't leave her jacket. Okay, I'm sorry, council?
Yeah, how often do they meet?
Oh, the, Stephanie, do you know how often they meet?
Every two years.
Yeah, and this is the, this year would be the year.
Even, even years.
I'm sorry, what?
Every two years in even years, so 2024, 2026.
And then probably during the year they have, the year that they meet, I would imagine, actually I have no idea, but would imagine they would meet for a few times and then?
They start meeting in spring. And off the top of my head, I don't know what the deadline is, but there's a deadline to submit the salaries, usually March, April, I believe.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So is there a proposal they look at, or how?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there a proposal they look at, or how does that even happen?
It's not a proposal. I think actually what happens is Vanessa, our HR director, will look at comparables, figure out where we're at, and do essentially a salary study, just like we do with our city employees. And we look at, you know, comparable cities. Kent's a little bit bigger than us, but it's a neighbor. Auburn's very comparable, Tuailla, Renton, you know, just local comparable cities. Everett's always been a comparable for, I mean, I don't know, for, for salaries, but it was for a while, or same size. Yeah, you'd have to, you know, I don't know. I, I actually purposely don't know a lot about it, but I, I keep, I keep out of it. And then, council, are you looking up that issue about conflicts of interest?
Yep, yep, we were just looking it up really quick. So it's not necessarily going to apply to Mr. Berusso in this instance, because he's not a city officer, official, or employee, or of the city, or a member of the immediate family member of any of those persons. So he is still fine. Underneath our city code and also state law, each member has a responsibility to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest prior to being appointed, and as they may arise any time thereafter, which is a standard requirement that we've actually instituted for each one of our commission members. But as it stands, there's nothing that would prohibit Mr. Berusso from being appointed.
I think actually where you see that happen is sometimes if you've got local governments that are dependent to or superior to, or even, you know, if there's some sort of relationship, a symbiotic relationship with the local governments, I think that would be, you know, problematic in which one relied on the other. That's where we, I've seen examples of that. Councilmember?
Yes, so last year, the City of Canton did their salary for their elected officials, and there was an article in the newspaper that, so they have a newspaper which is owned by our newspaper, you know, that?
Yes, the reporter.
Same family. And it reported inaccurately that the City of Federal Way council members were the highest-paid council members in this region, which we certainly are not.
That's funny.
And so I called their council president, Mr. Boyce, and I talked with him, and I said, where did you get that information? And he said, because it was reported at their council meeting. And he said, I don't know, someone said that, so we went with it. And I said, well, it's certainly not true, and I'd like it corrected, so that if anyone from Federal Way is reading this newspaper, they don't think that we're so highly compensated as was noted. And I went to the editor of the newspaper and the publisher, and it was, I don't believe it was ever corrected, but it certainly wasn't true and still isn't true. So.
It does gotta show you that, I mean, just as a general point, that one of the great obstacles or challenges we have in local government is dealing with misinformation and disinformation, frankly, at every level. And so we're very fortunate, and you know, I think that happens a lot more when communities don't have a newspaper. You see a level of dysfunctionality in communities. We're so fortunate to have the Mirror. And, and, you know, the, so, you know, when you see something like that, I think it is important, and who knows, maybe we'll, we'll be able to correct the record at a later time. Anything else you guys on this?
No, but we've been sad for years. We would make more money at our, our at McDonald's. I might have more fun, too.
I didn't even know council members got a salary when I was elected first. I had no idea.
I have no comment. All right, council president?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move to make the following appointments to the Independent Salary Commission, Gregory Berusso and Gordon Bach, to voting positions with terms to expire February 28th, 2028.
Second.
It's been a motion. A second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And now we are on to item, it passes unanimously. We're on to ordinances, item eight, second reading and enactment, item A, Council Bill 874, authorizing condemnation of certain property for the purpose of constructing the joint-use operations and maintenance facility. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 874, authorizing condemnation of certain property for the purpose of constructing the joint-use operations and maintenance facility, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, providing for the acquisition of certain property for the purpose of constructing the joint-use operations and maintenance facility along 28th Avenue South, from South 312th Street to South 308th Lane, including three properties along the south side of 308th Lane, describing the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such property, providing for the condemnation of the property, and directing the city attorney to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase are not successful.
All right. Councilmember Doby?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion. A second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Council reports. It's the first meeting of the month. We'll start with Councilmember Sephardosan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report on.
All right, Councilmember McDaniel?
Actually, I have a quick story. On Sunday, I was driving around the city and I had stopped at a, by a 7-Eleven on a turn signal on First Avenue and Three, I think it was Three 12th. And my car just died, just out of the blue, nothing, front of the line, ready to make a turn, going up the hill. And I ended up having to push it back and, you know, getting it out of the way. And I actually had two gentlemen pop out of the cars and help me. And then when I actually got into the 7-Eleven to store it there, the gentleman who owned the 7-Eleven told me not to worry about it. And it was kind of nice to see that when those stressful situations pop around you and you freak out a little bit, that there's people around the city who will help out. And the funny thing was, it was the first time in my whole life I've ever ran out of gas.
It only takes once.
Funny. Oh, man, never again.
You should talk to John about that. John's all about, after the meeting, ask him about that. Yeah, it only takes once. All right, thank you. And isn't it nice that people are so willing to just step up and help?
Oh, it was not a fun moment, and it was kind of stressful. And knowing they just pulled over, just hopped out, wanted to direct a traffic, didn't want to help me push the vehicle. And then as soon as I pulled up to 7-Eleven, I'm out of breath, and the guy's like, don't worry about it. He's like, don't leave it overnight, because there is a homeless place next across the street. But other than that, he was like, take your time. And it made a stressful event a lot easier. So I just wanted to thank, thanks to those guys and to the 7-Eleven owner.
Yeah, that's nice. Councilmember Honda?
Don't they have gas there?
Not anymore.
They used to, yeah.
Oh, interesting. So I would like to thank the mayor for allowing the Federal Way Service Network Group to have space here, either at City Hall or at the Federal Way Community Center.
Wherever you want.
Thank you. So this is a, a group of leaders from Kiwanis, Lions, any of our service clubs. And before COVID, we met once a month. I was a representative from Kiwanis and Seropimus, and we met over here in the Hilebus Room. And we talked about what our clubs were doing and tried to work with all the other clubs so that we didn't have a fundraiser on the same day, because that's really difficult if you want to support service clubs and they have fundraisers on the same day. And so COVID happened, and we haven't gotten together since COVID. And there's been a real desire to do that, because we're finding out that without this monthly interaction, there's not a lot of communication between some of the clubs. And so, for instance, last summer, there were two fund, two fundraisers on, three fundraisers on one day, one Saturday, and it was very difficult, especially when I needed to be at two of them, and, and three of them, and one of them I had to be at really early to help set up. So that was, you know, something that we're trying to avoid. So anyway, I wrote the mayor an email and asked if we could once again use the space, and he said yes. So if you're listening to this message, and you're in a service club, and we haven't reached out to you yet, please call me, and we're trying to get a consensus on when to meet and, and where, either here or at the Federal Way Community Center. So thank you very much for your support. I appreciate that.
Yeah, those folks do, as you know, do so much in the community. We're, we all belong to one group or another, and they do great work. So you name the place, we'll be there.
My husband and I attended the musical theater showcase at Federal Way High School on January 26th, and it's the, high school kids from ninth grade through 12th grade had short plays or songs that, because it's musical theater. And it was a fundraiser for them because they need to make money for their program, to keep their program alive at, at the school. But it was really awesome and really talented. And they do advertise on their web pa, on the Federal Way High School webpages that these things happen. And all of the high schools do things like this with their, their students. So if you can support this, it's really, it's really awesome. And the-
So if you can support this, it's really, it's really awesome and the, the students really appreciate having people to, in the audience besides their parents. So, you know, the, the theater at Federal Way High School is beautiful, it's absolutely stunning and can fit 401 people. And, um, there were about 78 people, because I count heads all the time. And, uh, we, we could have had a lot more to, to see their, their talent because they're really awesome. And then the Federal Way Kiwanis Club had two terrific kid assemblies this week, one at Mary Lake Elementary and one at Rainier View Elementary. Um, this is a way that the club, which I'm a member of and, uh, Linda is a member of, um, the mayor used to be, you can come back anytime. And I'm trying to get this guy to join us, um, yeah, I know. But, uh, it's a way to honor the kids for doing good in their school. And their, their teachers pick out two students per class and we are there to give them a bag of, of little goodies and shake their hand and say thank you and congratulations to them. So we do that once a month and we are at four schools this year, so, pretty awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Walsh?
Uh, just a couple of things. One, I would like to commend the staff for the great support they gave for the, uh, for the, uh, on Saturday, for the council retreat. And, uh, it was, it was a great event and my fellow council members and the mayor, I think it was a very productive, uh, meeting. And, uh, and as, as I said then, I, I, I think we did great without a facilitator. And, uh, probably saved some money too.
Right.
So anyway.
Tons.
And, uh, but then also, hey, just, uh, and, uh, a attaboy for the, for the PAC on this last Friday, I think it was, attended a, what was it, the Epic Queen concert? A Queen cover band that was, was great and, and nearly a full house. And so I was very, very glad to see, uh, a theater that was, uh, that was, was nearly full. And hopefully we can continue to have a lot of events there. And, and I think that a lot of people came from outside Federal Way to it, so it was drawing people to, to our city. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Councilor Dovi?
Uh, just a reminder that, uh, our financial literacy classes are running right now and we have some openings. If people still want to join, it might be on the late side, but we've still got seven weeks to go. And, uh, that's my report.
All right, Council President?
Uh, thank you to our police. Thank you to our police for the emphasis patrols. Thank you very much for, for the emphasis patrols, thank you. Drugs and crime. Uh, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Honda, for attempting to get our meeting started again with the, uh, school board directors. So I think that's valuable.
We will get that going again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, uh, thank you, a great meeting everybody, I appreciate it. Um, we are adjourned.